Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the fourth meeting of fiscal year 2023. If I can now call the meeting to order. We can first begin with our administrative items. Our next meetings we have scheduled are September 8th and September 22nd. To mark your calendars of that. And next, we have approval of minutes. And I don't know if everyone has had a chance to review. We have three sets and Julia was on vacation, so we did just get the last, the August 11th. But prior to that, we have July 14th and July 22nd.
Meredith, I think a couple of weeks ago, I made some revisions to the July minutes, both staff. If everyone saw those.
That's what's in the folder to have your.
Thank you, Julia.
Great. Has, why don't we start with July 14th? Have members had a chance to review July 14th minutes?
I have, I'm fine with July 14th.
Anyone else? Rich, did you have a chance to look those over?
Yep, I'm good.
Great, all right. Then a motion to accept July 14th minutes. Sean?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes, but I'll also second the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Cheryl. Yes, a second as well. And then, sorry, Sean, Rich and Maggie.
Maggie, you're on mute.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, thank you, approval of July 14th. And July 22nd. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
I'm also good with the 22nd.
Okay, great. And if I could have a motion to accept the minutes for July 22nd?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, Rich?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And Maggie?
Yes.
Okay, now, August 11th. I don't know. I actually have not had a chance to go over those thoroughly, so. Would people like more time with that or do others?
I would, yeah, I would, I, I have some edits I'd like to suggest to the board.
Okay, terrific, all right, let's hold off and defer to our September 8th meeting, the minutes of August 11th.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we can now move to a staff update and we have Josh, and I'm sorry, I did not introduce ourselves. So let's, we can also go around and introduce ourselves. Members, Maggie?
A Yoffield member.
Sean?
Sean Fahy, member.
Rich?
Rich Beeler, member.
Cheryl?
Cheryl Togias, member.
And myself, Meredith Hall, chair. Now, I'd like to introduce Josh Wilde, if you'd introduce yourself.
Josh Lee, Assistant Town Planner.
And Julia, you'd like to introduce yourself?
Julia Getman, clerk.
Thank you. Okay, Josh, we can go ahead and start with the staff update.
I just wanted to note Cheryl's hand is up before I get started. Not seem intentional, anyway. So first and foremost, we wanted to talk about the reimbursement grants that the town has won. Tim and I spoke with Lisa Cool in the accounting department about how those grants work. They're becoming increasingly common on the state side, but are still quite new to us as a municipality. We actually don't need a pot of money to pull from. We can set up a grant account with zero dollars in it and can draw down a negative balance. Then the reimbursement check will bring us back to zero. As long as we sort of zero out by the end, which is our intention and is what's going to happen. We'll be fine, so while we are really grateful that at the last meeting, the, the board was supportive in making its budgets available. It is no longer required, so we're grateful for that, but thankfully, it is not necessary on our end for the reimbursable grants. Next, it's informational. This next item, we don't need sort of anything from the planning board at the moment. But the South Shore Economic Development Corporation, which is a subsidiary of the South Shore Chamber of Commerce, has a small pool of grant funds available that is supporting their regional economic development agenda. They're trying to support housing production, zoning improvements that allow for greater sort of mixed use and better land management. Very in line with sort of work we're trying to perform in East Milton. They have expressed interest in supporting those East Milton rezoning efforts. So we may apply for a small grant as supplementary to help sort of the planning board's budgetary contribution to that zoning effort. You know, for additional impact studies, visualizations, traffic analysis and the like. Doesn't require sort of input or work on your end yet, but just keeping you in the loop on that potential money stream. Next, still staying in East Milton, one of the recommendations for the 2021 Rapid Recovery Plan for East Milton Square was to commission a parking management plan. We've had extensive and long-running analysis of parking that's been done in the neighborhood. But as part of that plan, we've just signed an agreement with MAPC to produce a plan. They've provided a scope of work that will take place over the next few months through the end of the calendar year, fiscal year. So it'll end in December, where they will review past parking studies, development proposals, our zoning ordinance. Public forums, site visits and review of our sort of existing parking management efforts. This should be relatively swift because MAPC has been involved with us over the years on this site. So we're, we're not expecting it to be more than a three, four month process with, with the MAPC hoping to have their final plan in, by the end of December. It's coming up to about $10,000 as expected. Finally.
Josh, I'm sorry, question, Meredith, to Josh. Josh, the funding for that, is that through the grants that we, that the town received?
Yeah, that is grant funded, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I can send around their scope of work as well, if you haven't already received it from town. That breaks down their, their budget for each item. But it should be relatively quick and in line with what we were expecting. Looking at still parking, but in the Central Avenue Business District, we presented at the most recent Traffic Commission meeting, our initial proposal to update parking regulations along Central Avenue and Elliot Street to make it clearer and easier for folks. There's sort of a motley mix of 30-minute, one-hour, 15-minute, two-hour all over the place. So we're hoping to streamline for the benefit of enforcement officers. We've, we had this request come out initially from Milton Police to be able to more effectively monitor that neighborhood as well as from DPW and, and business leaders who have been having some confusion from their customers. The Planning and Community Development page of the town of Milton site under its Transportation Resources tab has created a dedicated webpage for this update. Includes a map of the proposed changes as well as a survey for folks to fill out and share their thoughts. We've already had half a dozen responses since it went live just two days ago. So we're, we're hopefully going to get some, some feedback over the coming weeks. So far, mostly positive, some people wanting us to go even further, so we're excited.
How are you advertising that, that there's a survey?
We, we put it on both the town Facebook and Twitter accounts. We put physical flyers on businesses in Central Square and on posts outside of those businesses physically in that space. And obviously announced that the survey would be going out to members who were attending the Traffic Commission meeting last week.
Great, which I heard was a great meeting.
Fantastic meeting, highly recommend. Finally, and part of the reason why we've invited our environmental coordinator, Mira Patel, here is that our department and engineering have been working over the last few weeks on a slate of climate-related efforts. It will be detailed far more extensively at the request of select board members at their September 6th meeting. So this is just a brief overview, but we'll be giving a far more in-depth update. But as you know, the town has not awarded a grant to pursue its climate action planning efforts as presented in that initial round of funding from the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. Despite that, we're still moving forward with a series of other projects. On the energy side, we're working closely with inspectional services and a free-of-charge Department of Energy program called Soul Smart to get the town designated as a Soul Smart community. That both positions us well for additional state funding as well as, you know, does the good thing of making us more clear and open for solar development and installation and residential on roofs. We are also now members of a program called Building Electrification Accelerator, which is a municipal coalition led by the folks in Brooklyn, Brooklyn, Brookline, apologies, my New Jersey self is coming through there. In Brookline, who initially proposed a fossil fuel prohibition, which has led to the recent climate bill, including those 10 communities who are allowed to prohibit fossil fuels. And this is work to try and expand that conversation, see how municipalities can lead in different building decarbonization and electrification efforts. It's not committing us to anything, it's just informational and sort of a, a local governance tool. Select Board Member Mike Zulis has been working on that as well, so he's a great point of contact on that front. We've also been finding additional funding sources to do a greenhouse gas inventory. Most recently, we had some interest and potential funding from the Copeland Family Foundation to do that. It's currently budgeted at $25,000 and will be done by our consultants, KLA, who initially put in our MVP grant. We also have been working with Sustainable Milton and the Milton High Earth Club to develop a town meeting article, sort of cementing Milton's commitment to climate action, recognizing the urgency of the times. And it's still very much in its early stages with discussion happening between town staff, by our youth and by our sort of sustainability champions, but that is moving forward. And they're hoping to put something forward to town meeting to the effect of sort of re-galvanizing our climate efforts. But we also have work happening on solid waste, stormwater management and some low-impact design that Mira has been spearheading, so I'd like to have her share that briefly.
Before we go into that, if I may.
Yes.
Josh, Josh, you covered a lot there. Do you think it's possible you could do like just a written summary and kind of the interrelationships of who's doing what? Like how are they interrelated or are they independent? I'd just like to be able to get my head around all of it a little bit more.
Yeah, of course, we're preparing something like that for the select board meeting on the 6th, which will have slides as well as some, some information. So, so that will be prepared for that and, and I can share that out when, when that's ready for that meeting.
Great, thank you.
Great, welcome, Mira.
Hello. So Josh was saying that there was some questions about LID and green infrastructure in the town. And I wanted to start out with, so I am in the engineering department. My work includes solid waste management as well as stormwater management. And to give some context, Milton has been part of the MS4 permit from the EPA for about 20 years now. And it requires annual reporting and gradual improvement on our stormwater management practices and our infrastructure, which is of course tied to how much impervious cover is present. This year, they're asking for a report of our subdivision regulations and zoning code that allows for low-impact development and green infrastructure. So some actions that they are recommending we could take are encouraging developers in the town itself to incorporate green areas that would benefit Milton with stormwater treatment, but also function aesthetically. In the engineering department, we're trying to integrate national, natural stormwater management when we pave our roads, after we fix our main, water mains. And there is a list of specific standards that the report asks for, including simple things as requiring planting street trees on new streets or allowing landscaping in a parking lot. And it asks whether any updates to these regulations or zoning codes are happening and if there's a schedule for those. So I'm really hoping to start a conversation between the planning board and the engineering department and specifically me, because I'm taking over the MS4 permit about how we can update the regulations and codes in a way that keeps Milton green and helps manage our stormwater.
Excellent. These are all things we're working on, so that's great.
Can, can I just say that I applaud the efforts? It's something I've been hoping that the town would get to and I'm really happy to see it happening now, so thank you.
I have a quick question too, is there, and it's probably out there and I just don't know because I've never looked, but is there a place that I, you can, like, we could go see what's going on and kind of how things are progressing? Like, do you post some of this stuff or?
Going on, specifically what going on, I'm sorry?
Is there like a website that we can go on and actually see what your plans are and what you're doing? I'm interested to, I mean, this is selfishly, this is the work I'm in and the company I work for. And so I would love to hear more as we move forward with these plans. Just curious, if, like, are you keeping track of this somewhere so the public can see what you're doing?
So we would love to. The annual reports are on, on the, all on the Milton website. So each year, we have to do a report about like how we're doing in terms of sweeping the streets or at least keeping our stormwater clean. This year is for the impervious cover and how we can reduce our impervious cover and keep it more natural and more green.
Okay, I, I guess what I was more thinking of is when you're starting to talk more about, then these might be more wishful things we want to work on, but more greenhouse gas issues or how the, what the town is going to work on, those are kind of what I was thinking.
Yeah, there's, there's not currently sort of a singular page talking about the sustainability efforts that the, the town is pursuing, especially because many of these are done on more of a ad hoc or, or department-by-department basis. We can all come up on this together. Part of our Soul Smart program includes some broader sort of community engagement and, and town website transparency on, at the very least, our renewable energy programs. But we're, we're interested in trying to make a more holistic sustainability portal. But there's a lot of work that goes into that and a lot of work that even the two of us don't know about happening at the town.
Yeah, definitely, thank you.
Thank you.
So yeah, at some point, I do hope to talk to you about changing some of the codes and perhaps reviewing what we can do to make stormwater management more green.
Awesome, yeah, I would, and I'm sorry to keep going down this road, but I would love to hear about that more. But again, like the company I work for, we, we do, we try to do a lot of work in different states on code advancement. And so I'm, I'm not the code person though, but I do listen to them and hear about it. So it would be interesting to see what we're doing in the town or what your thoughts are in the future.
Okay, yeah.
So if you don't mind, Meredith, to, to follow up with Rich, you know, on Facebook. I know the police department, the fire department, DPW, Milton Cemetery. So town departments do have, you know, Facebook presence. You know, Milton Cemetery is doing a fantastic job on their Facebook page. So I'm wondering if you would ever consider a combination of planning department and maybe engineering department? Just so, you know, just like Rich said, not that we're holding you to anything, but to say, oh, this is what's going on. This is what we're working on. Because I feel like that's the easiest way these days to reach so many people. So I don't know if that's a possibility.
So I, I'm actually responsible for the DPW Facebook page.
You're doing a great job. Follow that.
So yes, but that would just, because engineering's under DPW, so all of our engineering things go into DPW already. So I'm not sure how that.
Yeah, could planning board go into that or planning department go into that?
We, we can try and bolster our, our social media presence. Certainly nothing wrong, wrong in that, but not something we're currently sort of really racing the wheels for, considering, consider that.
Anyone else? Questions for Mira? Okay, I don't see any other hands up. Thank you so much for coming and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you for having me and thank you, Josh, for also having me here.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome to come anytime, thank you.
Thank you, Mira, you too.
Okay. And Josh, is there anything else that you had?
That, that concludes the staff update as well as the items that Tim wanted covered. So, so that's everything on our end that's not already on the agenda.
Thank you, Josh, you did a great job with that, that staff update, thank you very much. So moving on to item number three, citizens speak. If there's anyone here who would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda, please feel to raise your, feel free to raise your hand. And. One minute. I'm not seeing any hands up this time, so. Great, we can move on to new business. This is just, and, and this really pertains to the, what I had mentioned on our, our previous meeting. This is a follow-up. To a meeting that Arthur and I had with a select board, rather than doing the joint full board meeting, Arthur and I were able to get together and really go through sort of what we have been working on as sort of our immediate and near-term goals, which we had, we were together for, probably met for close to two hours and really went through quite a bit, that really we were very much aligned on, I think, with the select board, the items that Arthur Doyle had on his list, that the select board is thinking about and the, the things that they have been discussing. Just to highlight, you know, some of the things, and again, this is sort of a, a list, a sort of a running list, but items that we can add to and into a sort of an open-ended list, you might say. But the first thing obviously we talked about was the East Milton zoning with relationship with enforcement, traffic, providing a timeline. I think Tim has been working on sort of a rough timeline and expectation of, of the different steps of the overlay zoning for East Milton and, and really how this ties in with the economic development of, of the town. So looking at, you know, density, but balancing it out with the infrastructure in the town and, and how we approach it with that perspective. Also, we talked about the beautification of East Milton and other business districts and towns. Things that we can be thinking of and mindful of when there are opportunities for redevelopment. We just, I think we had a great meeting last night, for those who missed it, on the design guidelines, where we're talking about the Milton Village and the ways that we really treat the streetscapes and work with new development to do that. Milton Landing, this is something that there's been some planning and there's a Milton Landing Committee. The next step, I believe that they're looking at is dredging on that. But really, that, talking about how important or how wonderful it would be to really activate that waterfront in terms of, you know, the, the use by the Milton High crew team, having a boathouse possibly built down there so that they don't have to carry the skulls, you know, across the, across the field and, and have easier access to docks and, and getting in and off the water safely. Also kayaks, you know, the opportunity, you know, one day that people could go down and either store kayaks or rent a kayak down there. I think there's a lot of opportunity that we, that, a lot of potential. And, and really what's happening now with the yacht club, the Milton Yacht Club is undergoing some study right now for some renovation and preservation of that building, which is really exciting. The next, we touched on the scenic roadway signage. And also that the Conservation Commission is also developing signage that will, will identify. And, and I think they're, they're just a few weeks away from being completed, but 10 Conservation Commission signs, which will actually mark out what is conservation land in Milton. Because I think a lot of times you drive by this wooded area, but people might not know that that's under a Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. Next was the ADU discussion that I've, that, you know, having that conversation, we've had, you know, it's been, you know, certainly controversial and, and there's been really strong viewpoints on different aspects of, of the approach to the ADU conversation. But that there is a sense really that the town would like to see something. And for that to come from the planning board. And I think that's something that, you know, I believe we can come together and, and that would, I will be putting that on it as an agenda item, so we can go back and really address that and maybe talk about the approaches to, to doing some sort of a study on that. And really that we, in the meantime, until we sort of get moving, is that we really focus and look at what other towns are doing. And, and just see, you know, how we can make something work that, that will, everyone will embrace. We may not all agree on all aspects, but somehow come together on something that would, would benefit the community of Milton. We talked about the MPIC, and this is on our agenda tonight, that we have two positions that are up for, that we need to appoint new positions. So we'll talk briefly about process. There was a select board meeting, I'll talk to you a little bit later about that. The select board met and then this evening we'll discuss, you know, their recommendations for how we come up with those, those nominations. And the next thing I mentioned was my concern about properties in Milton and bringing up the demolition by neglect. You know, that we maybe look at what other communities do and how we address properties such as the Swift Hat Shop and the Knights of Columbus Building, which have just really sat and deteriorated to the point where it's now becoming safety issues and health issues and how we, you know, in trying to work with developers, we haven't seemed to, to make an advancement on that. But if there is something, a tool that we could have as a town, that when we start to see buildings in the initial stages of going into disrepair, that we, that we activate some sort of putting them on, on notice and what we can do legally about that. I also, we also talked about strategic, being strategic in acquiring property, thinking about the needs of our town and asking Arthur, you know, what could we be doing to be really out front when we know that a property is coming up for development? If it's, whether it's for a school, a, a fire station, that we are sort of in a position to act and not react. Because unfortunately, we will always lose out to, you know, most often to a developer if we are not ready and positioned and aligned on, on sort of meeting the needs of our, of our town. As we are so built out, it is certainly a challenge for us. We also touched on the MBTA zoning, which is going to be something that the planning board will be discussing and obviously the select board and, and that it's really not something that is up to one, one board or the other, but that we, you know, this will be a town-wide decision on how we, we approach this. And then lastly, you know, really looking at development opportunities from an economic development standpoint in zoning as, you know, as we look forward and, and really highlighted the work and the, that we are now wrapping up the design guidelines for the Milton Village and that we will hopefully be seeing the benefits of that come to fruition and, and sooner than later. And then also, you know, the same for East Milton, doing some appropriate zoning there to, as, as the select board is very conscious of the financial needs of the town and that we address those. And then, yeah, I didn't mention, but to add to the list is. And then, yeah, I didn't um mention, but to add to the list is Cheryl, I know the cut and fill bylaw is something I've talked to Tim about. I, I really would like to see us find a way that um, that we can, we can get something to town meeting on a cut and fill bylaw. So that we can um, when we have a development project that is um not necessarily being as sensitive. We can, we can point them in that direction. So, so those are just roughly highlights. And, you know, if, if I'm missing anything that you all um have been wanting to see. I would, I would be happy to hear from um other items that we could just have sort of our, our focus on. Without having, spreading ourselves too thin and we can really get some things accomplished. Sean, you had your hand up?
Thanks Meredith. Could you uh provide a list to the members of the planning board, that list that you just went through?
Sure.
If you don't mind, e- e- even if it just is an itemized list of each item without all of the explanation you provided, just so we have something to work with.
Yeah, just to be, that's great. Absolutely. Rich?
Um, no, that's, yeah, I was actually gonna ask the same question, but I also might kind of follow up. That would be um, it, it might just be too soon for this, but have you put any thought into like um of those things? What are your thoughts? Um, because that's a, that's a long list and obviously it'll take a few years to accomplish everything on there. And so I guess the question would be is like maybe a priority, maybe we can talk at some point about prioritization. But also timeline, because I, you know, before we start bringing these two agendas, we, or. Before we really dive deep into them, we'd probably want to understand like wh- what's, what's the agenda, what's the timeline? What's, what are we really trying to accomplish there? Is it, is it gonna be done in three months, five months? Um, and really something, you know, what we haven't done in a while is just like really planning out like what that's gonna look like. Yeah, because we usually end up having lots and lots and lots of meetings sometimes that go a little uh long and haywire. But this is a long list. It looks great. I'm glad you guys met. Um, you know, I'm excited about, you know, getting to a point where we can whittle it down. And put some structure around it.
That's great. That's great. Um, and some of these things are more immediate that, you know, are um easier that we, we can address. But some are longer term, you know, like the Milton Landing, thinking long-term and, and that it will involve more than just the planning board. But collaboration with other, other boards as well, but um, absolutely. That's great. And I, I did put the sort of East Milton as, as sort of on the forefront of, of what we're um, what we're looking at right now, so.
Can I just um, um, I agree with Rich, um sort of being able to map it out. I think we have to, we all have to be mindful of the uh timeframes for zoning. Timeframes for things like rules and regs is totally different. It's under the planning board only. But things that require town meeting, like zoning, you know, we have. As we saw in the email, a deadline coming up in mid-October for articles for December. And I believe the deadline for the annual town meeting will, will be shortly thereafter that one. And so I think it's helpful to think about, you know, what. Who's in charge or who's going to take the lead and whether it's the planning department as part of planning initiatives. Or whether that's, it's actually members of the board here. You know, at times in the past, you know, members of, of this board have taken the lead and brought it back to the rest of the board. Other times, you know, it's like memory care zoning, for example. There was, you know, an interested party who brought it to us and we reviewed it. But on something we're taking the lead on, um, it's hard to do all of it in a, in our meeting timeframes once a month. I mean, it takes, it would take years to get things done, really, you know, that, in that kind of format. So I think everybody needs to kind of think about what their availability is, what their um interest is. Where we might hire consultants, because we do have budget. And we, you know, that budget is, goes back, we lose it in July, right? And, you know, it may sound like July's not that far, we just passed July, but the time goes by quickly, you know? By the time you get contracts negotiated, it's like the time's up. We saw it with Milton Village Design Guidelines, I think. So I really do think it's important for us to think through the, the timing on all of this. And, and we can talk about prioritizing, but we might say something's going to be easy to kick off. It might be not the highest priority for everyone, but it might be something we can get done. Let's say cut and fill, for example. Right, maybe that's something we can get done for one of these coming uptown meetings pretty quickly. Whereas we know, you know, like East Milton and MBTA communities are going to be, you know, lengthy process, right? So we just have to understand our role in those which are larger than just planning board, right? So, uh, and then as far as like ADU, I think, you know, what we need. It's always interesting to me, I've been at this, I say that, I keep saying this, but I've been at it a long time. But I, I think I'd like to just, you know, share, you know, my observations of having been at this a while. That it's, it's hard to get people focused on what you're working on until somehow there's something out there um that they're responding to. And oftentimes, I'm really dismayed that what it, what they're responding to is a, a reaction to it. That's um, takes on a life of its own before it even gets kind of explained. And so I think on a large initiative, it's really important to think about process of public engagement. Because my feeling on ADU and temporary apartments is those things just took on a life of their own. And, you know, it's, it, there's a lot of people who had a lot of anxiety, angst, interest and so forth. But there's a lot of people who spend a lot of time doing research too. Like I read tons of, tons of documents, I read tons of zoning, I, you know? And yet it's hard to have a dialogue and conversation when you've got, you know, kind of defensive mechanisms built up. Because people's, you know, may have heard something that was not quite right, or they only got parts of the information. So, I'm not trying to revisit all of that, I'm just suggesting that we really think about what we can learn from that. And, and how the process can be better, okay?
And Cheryl, you did remind me of something that I was thinking of is that possibly we do more with um small, like not. Maybe two members working together offline. Like I'll just throw out, you know, Cheryl, maybe you and Maggie could work offline on the cut and fill um bylaw. You know, that could be something the two of you could work, you know, spend a little time and, and focus on. Or, you know, something else, somebody else could be working on something. So that we aren't spending all the time, you know, of our meeting going through, catching everybody up, you know, and, and. But you, that we can make a little more progress on that. So just something um, I was actually thinking about that the two of you would be great at. But um, we can also, you know, there may be others.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea that um, in, in terms of, you know, saying like uh Denny and I worked together on Tree, your vision.
That's what I do.
Yeah, but, but I do think it's important for us to see the whole picture first. It's really important for me because, you know, as we know, I'm in my last year, which is in his last year. I'd like to get as much done as possible. And I recognize that I may not get everything that I'm working on um done. But I think I have an expertise that could be utilized for certain things better than others. I'm every, I'm sure everybody thinks that way too. But then if we can plan it all out, then, you know, it, it'll help us be productive with our time together as well, so.
Great, thank you. And uh, Rich, you had your hand up?
I think Sean was first.
Sean, yes, sorry, Sean, you did have your hand up. Was that from earlier or?
No, it's the second. Thank you. I'm probably repeating what's already been said, but it's a long list. I am probably like you guys, very ambitious in terms of what can be accomplished within this planning board year. And um, I think if we put some effort into recognizing what it's gonna take to accomplish. A uh execution of each of the initiatives that have been identified. And put a, put, put a real good plan together, you know, and what I'm thinking is. You know, each of those items identify who else needs to be engaged, how long it might take. What we have to do as an action plan for each one of them, you know, I, I just looking at the email that came out today. I think um, for the next town meeting, the uh, the filing date is the 12th of October. Which is less than two months away. So just recognizing what we can accomplish in the short term. And I'm always an advocate when you have as much to do as we have to do, anything we can do quickly, we should do quickly. And not let the longer task-oriented items stop the shorter task-oriented items from getting done. But uh, um, if you can put that list together and we have a chance to think about it individually. And uh, and, and then probably collectively work on a plan. I like your idea of, of uh parceling out any of the work that can be done. So that we can share the responsibility amongst us.
Great. And I think you're right, and putting a timeline on them. And some may be just ongoing things, like beautification of our business districts. You know, that can be something not shorter, but it, but sort of an ongoing thing that we are always mindful of. But um, absolutely, yeah. Rich?
Yeah, um, yeah, Sean, I, I couldn't agree with you more on all those, all those points. I just, to, to add on, I, I liked what you also said, Meredith, about um utilizing, or maybe Cheryl, I don't remember. Somebody mentioned the funds we have available. Um, so maybe, you know, Cheryl, to your point, we, the ADUs, it is a hot topic. And, you know, regardless of how much outreach you do. I don't think I've ever seen something that was a hot topic, didn't have people come out at the end and say they didn't know about it. I mean, it's the nature of a town, right? Some people are, are watching every one of these and some people don't pay attention until they hear somebody comment on it. If that's life. Um, so maybe that is something like, kind of thinking of what someone Sean said. I agree, we should be looking at it really prioritizing, I'd almost go further to say perhaps, yeah, sorry, you know, don't have to give Tim extra work. But maybe somebody like Tim, who's been a part of all those conversations. Could put together kind of a quick, take your list and say, here's kind of the next steps on all those things and timeline. And when they need to be done or when they could be done. You know, that might help us whittle it down, but instead of like maybe punting like an ADU, knowing that's gonna be a while. Maybe we hire somebody to do a bit of a study. So I agree Cheryl, I did a lot of research too. Tim did a lot of research, uh others did research, um, I'm sure. You know, I know Danny last year did a lot of research. Everybody had looked and done a lot of things. But the reality is there is some staunch opinions and the, you know, research be damned, people are gonna have their opinions. And so I'm almost feeling like we get a third party and to really do some qualitative, quantitative qualitative study on different towns, what they're doing. Um, I heard a lot of things last year about, hey, that may be illegal to do. Or this may be, you know, make the AG unhappy, or, you know, you can't do that, or you can do this. And so getting somebody to come in, parse through all that, put it up on the board for us to take a look at. Might just help us get further down the line quicker. Because again, there was a lot of things stated last year that were miscommunications, not, you know, you know, helpful. It just, it was some, it's a thing, we went down a lot of rabbit holes that didn't need to go down. I had neighbors coming up to me saying, hey, this is gonna happen. And I'm like, well, actually that can't happen. You know, that's not in the law, you know, that's, you know? And so we really need somebody, and I think it's probably a third party to come in and help us out. Doesn't have to be a huge study, just somebody to do something to bring us together.
So we will put that on an agenda, because I want us to be able to really focus on that. This is more of an overview, but I, thank you, that's, we will definitely.
Well, well.
Next steps.
For what it's worth, Meredith, I, I think what I was saying is if we're gonna work on it at all this year. We need to have a solid plan on how we're gonna get there. And so the first step is understanding, do we even have time? How long will it take? What could we even get done? And that could be, hey, we're gonna have a meeting, we're gonna have a study done. We're not gonna talk about this for six more months. That might be the answer, might not be. I'm just saying, uh, I would like to see us do a really rigorous um, str- real, put a lot of rigor around what we're gonna work on this year.
Yeah. And I think we all, we all know how important East Milton is. And we wanna be able to dedicate our time to, to focusing on, on, on that. So we don't wanna lose track and, and, but, but you're right, I think we can do both, but how we do it is having a plan.
Meredith, I, I think we need to be cognizant that there's a lot of other parts of town that don't get planning attention. And I think I've said this before, there's been a lot.
Yeah, no, no.
A lot of attention. So while I think we, well, you've made a, an assumption there about East Milton. Already that that's the top priority. I would prefer that we can look at all of them and decide together, you know, what's the top priority. Because we're good, if we're hiring a consultant for East Milton, that will help us advance East Milton. And other things um, we may not be hiring a consultant for, that, you know, maybe the board itself can dedicate some time to in other parts of town. So I just, I, I just.
No, no, and I'm just saying this because we're starting off right now with, with this.
Yeah, we might all be feeling the same thing. I mean, heck, I live in East Milton and I wanna see a lot of things happen in East Milton. But I also am nervous about lots and lots of attention in East Milton, because the reality is, and I, I know people don't agree with me on this and I'm fine with it. I wasn't, I was a huge fan of the barrier study that was going on, but I think it took a detour and I was not happy in the end. However, I wanna see more stuff get talked about in East Milton. I wanna see more engagement with the neighborhoods over here and the neighborhood association, back and forth with us. That's gonna take a long time, but I don't wanna so push it so hard that we don't do a good job. And so I like Meredith, that you're saying you wanna like focus on it, but I think this is gonna be a focus that's gonna take years.
Okay, and Sean, you had your hand up again?
All I was gonna suggest is that the list has been read uh in the interest of efficiency of our meeting. And for those residents that participate in the meeting, we should move on to our next topic and um.
Because we want to go through the RP, yes, we do have a bit, great. Alright. Are we ready to, to move on? Great, okay. Um, ne- next is going to old business. And I just, because I think we were short on time last um, last week. But the discussion um, and the vote, if, if people want to, to support the Conservation Commission resolution on the scenic road signage. Um, I spoke with John Ki- Kiernan, just to confirm. This was a resolution that was made um by the Conservation Commission. With the intent that the detail of the signage would go to either the planning board or in, or the uh historical commission. That we may work together, maybe go through the sign review. It wasn't, it wasn't necessarily stating what the signs would look like or, or what board would, would um, would make, you know, take the next step. This was the um, more of a general idea that, that having scenic road signage would be one tool. Not, not, we, there's many others, but it'd be one way just to educate the community that we do have scenic roads. That it's something that we should all be so proud of, that we wanna protect. Um, and it's just a way that, that other communities have found a way just to uh, to let people know that there is um, that they may live on a scenic road. Or be traveling down a scenic road and that it's, it's a special designation. So, uh, the historical commission did take a vote to support um, moving the idea of doing his scenic road signage forward. And um, so without, you know, I'm not getting caught up into the, you know, the details. It will be, the next step will be to determine which board um would take responsibility and, and how that would happen. So. I don't know how our board feels.
Sorry, that's, that was, um, if you don't mind, I, I watched that meeting and I support everything that they're saying. I live on a scenic road and we had someone come in and um, cut down trees and it was very traumatic. So I totally um, um, appreciate and, and on board with that plan. But they, they stumbled over a bit as to who would um take the lead and really um, by taking the lead, they also meant. Whose budget does that come out of? And to um, you know, at the discussion a little while ago, we do have funds in our um, budget. And um, you know, I don't have an opinion at this point if it should come out of our budget or not. But I'm also, you know, and, and maybe this is a total appropriate thing to say. But I'm also a little bit concerned, you know, looking back at town meeting, that there was an initiative by some town meeting members to defund our board. So I am a little bit concerned about moving forward and taking on um more financial responsibilities. When um, there is that sentiment out there.
Yeah, and Maggie, I think it would be, you know, it. Would be who would, you know, be taking the initiative, but that, those are good questions, absolutely. And I don't think it, to vote in support of this doesn't mean that we're not gonna. And I don't think it, to vote in support of this doesn't mean that we're not gonna, you know, you were not voting to to fund it. So. Sorry, um, I don't know who had their hand up next, if it was Rich or Cheryl or Sean. So.
Sean.
I think it was Sean, it's how everybody is positioned, it kind of.
It's like, what is that, Hollywood Squares, Meredith? You're you're.
Yes.
Watch all these squares to see which one has the yellow hand first. Uh, I, I think there's an immediate action that we could take as a town in regard to this. And and that would be to, uh, prepare some type of type of a notice that gets mailed to any resident that lives on a scenic road. And advise them of their residence on a scenic road. And, um, the nature of what's expected of them with regard to it. The, we, I do think, um, for those that are on a scenic road that don't know they are. We're at risk every single day that somebody might take action on their property. And the longer, you you know, the 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 longer it takes us to get signs up and to, you know, figure out what the sign is. And to order the sign and, you know, to install the sign. I think we're preventing ourselves from protecting what we're really concerned about. And I I happen to think that a notice, I'm not sure who would be, what board would write it in the town. Maybe it's the Conservation Commission. And, um, it can't cost very much, I don't know how many residences there are that we'd be mailing to. But it's simply preparing a letter and 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 mailing it. It's, um, it's, it's a, it's a low cost, um, it's a low cost action. I think that at least provides an immediate notice to everybody.
And it would fall under the planning board, um, I believe, to the planning department to, um, for us to do that. It, we we have the jurisdiction over it, but, um, you know, that can be discussed too. And I'm not, and I, I couldn't agree more, that's something we could move ahead of regardless of the signage. So this was just a vote on the signage, but we can have a separate discussion, because I think you're absolutely right. This is, this is something we should be doing, is sending just a, just a letter and just a.
If, and if I could ask a question on the signage, I'm unclear. What would the frequency of the signs be? Were, are we talking about signage that would be, you know, every three hundred yards, e- every, every half mile? You know, I'm I'm a little unclear on exactly what we're voting on. Or are we just simply voting that we are, we.
We look at this as a.
Okay.
Yes.
The details are to be sorted out.
Correct, this is a con- concept, conceptual support of the concept of doing this.
And if we vote as a, as a board to support it, are we committed to signage at that point? Or are we committed to trying to figure it out?
Trying to figure it out.
Okay.
And exploring what the different types of signage, different towns do different things.
Okay.
Certainly, we're not looking to put, you know, to sort of litter the town with signs. You know, we're not, that, this is good, something that would have to be aesthetically pleasing and maybe one per scenic roadway. So minimal, I would say minimal number, because we have quite a few scenic roads in Milton, so.
Thank you.
I would support, um, exploring, um, what other communities have done. And whether they found signage to be effective or not, um, before committing to installing signs. And I just wanted to clarify, um, that the planning board budget is for studies. Um, it's a particular line item for studies. So, um, I I believe it would not allow for us to use it to actually purchase signs. And I wouldn't support that, I I do think we we have limited, it it may seem like a lot, as we've all seen. But it doesn't go very far, that that money for studies. And there's always more need than we have money for. So I'd like, I'd like that money to stay with the studies. But I think the studies is important, we we talk about other things and needing to study, you know, what other communities have done. And and I I just think that I would support, um, um, moving forward with, uh, some study, some analysis. A budget and so et cetera. I don't know, though, that I would put that as a priority for the planning department and the planning board if we're talking about priorities, I'm sorry. With so many things, I think if we could put it on the list, that would be my preference. And we could talk about, you know, in in context with all the other initiatives.
Great, great. And Rich?
Yeah, um, I'm not, so yeah, I I'm glad you said that, I think I I agree with you and I would need Tim or somebody else or Meredith, you know. Like, I wouldn't think that we would ever, no matter what, fund signs that would come out. Not us, we, I don't even think we would be the ones deciding all the signs. But one other thing, along that note, though, I I'm a little confused on what our purview is here. Because, um, we're be, it it's seems to me that we're being asked just to back it, that sounds wonderful. Um, but we're also talking about, uh, exploring, um, studies of our own to see what other sign, towns do. So I'm a little confused at, why would we support somebody else's letter to some other board? But we're the ones that are supposed to go figure it out, that seems odd to me. So, I I mean, I'm behind everything you guys are saying, I think it all sounds wonderful, I don't think this binds us. I'm like, I'm not asking anybody else to follow suit on it. But I'm just probably gonna abstain, because I, we talked about this so much at length last time. But we didn't have a lot of good context of why we were talking about it. And now we're talking about this, and you guys are all saying great things. But I still don't understand what the planning board's purview is signs in the town. And I would never want to commit our town to funding without having a lot more conversations with the town administrators, select board and others. So, and I know that we're not binding us to anything, but by supporting something. And asking the town to get behind and do something, you're asking the town to commit those funds. I I just, this was an awkward one that came to us, I don't, I I feel like, I think a lot of work has to be done. Again, I'm behind what you guys are talking about, but it's just, I don't think we had enough information here.
Great, and it may be that we want to, that we want this to come, you know, our ideas. And work with the DPW on this, on how the DPW could fund something. You know, this, this is, you know, they were not suggesting that a specific board. The select board are, they're gonna be bringing this up at their meeting as well, so they might take the initiative. But we do, I I guess I'm a little more comfortable with it, because we do a lot of historic signage. And, you know, some of the districts on Hillside have historic signage. And so I'm, I'm more comfortable if it's, you know, obviously it's the appropriate. And just acknowledging, um, a scenic road. And the, and the reason why it's important to us, um, and the historical commission. Is because we have been the ones to have had to go, you know, once the trees have been clear cut. You know, unintentionally, you know, it 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 becomes very messy for the, for the town. And this is just a way for us to prevent accidental stone walls to be taken down. And and trees on public land to be taken down.
So I agree with everything you said, and it also, I mean, I can get behind all that. The only problem, though, is this was very specific in changing, um, street signs, like the green signs that are on the end of your street. You know, I live on Church Street, and so scenic road, if this was a scenic road. What they'd be saying is we should take the two church street signs on either end, take them down, put new ones up that just say scenic road on top. That's in front of three or four houses, it's not in front of a lot of people, it's seen by maybe, I don't know, I don't look at my street sign when I come in. But the the fact of the matter is, it's not, I don't believe unless you 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 might be opening up, that we really don't know what's in front of us. It's not about signs when you're entering a neighborhood that you're now in, um, Scots Woods. Or you're now in the, you know, granite rail area, that's not what we're talking about. These, this was very defined to those street signs. And so, again, I don't really know why it's in front of us, because we're not, that's not really, I didn't think that was our purview. I thought that was another group, I just think they're asking for our support to somebody else.
Exactly.
Sounds wonderful, but for me to support it, I have so many questions, which I don't think I'll ever get answers to, because it's not our deal.
Great. And that was, what you saw that Tim sent out was just an example of what, you know, one or two towns do. Because they were trying to just find, you know, what are the examples of other towns do? I've seen wooden post signs with scenic roadway on them, you know. It would be up to us, whatever we would wanna do, but but it sounds like, you know, people wanna hold off on this, so I'm gonna defer this to another conversation.
I mean, is there a way we can support the initiative and take the word sign out? You know, um, so we're supporting something, because we all agree it's a good thing. But we're just not quite sure if sign is the correct method.
I like that, I mean, I'm behind it, I just don't understand, I don't know what we're doing. Yeah, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to be a.
That's okay, no, 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 I.
Railing us here, it's just, I'm so like, like, I like this idea. If somebody was to come in, like if Tim or Josh, if you're, if you were gonna say, no, this is, you know, it's up to the planning board to really weigh in here. And have some thoughts where the future of the signs go in the town. To Maggie's point, great, then let's, let's say we wanna get behind something, we wanna start working on it, Meredith, if you go on your list. And we can send back something to this board and say, yeah, we're behind, you know, doing something and we wanna jump in with somebody and do something.
Great. So then I I would say we probably are are all in agreement that we do wanna create more awareness on our scenic roadways. To prevent the cutting down of trees and and stone wall removal. The question is, um, are signs the best way to do that, or are they one way that we can do that? So why don't I do a little, I'll do some research on it and see what other towns do, um, maybe bring it back, you know, see if this is something. You know, a little more specific than, and and who would be ultimately responsible? And I think, Arthur, that's gonna be part of their discussion, is this the sign review committee? Is this, you know, DPW? But I think we would wanna have a say in it. You know, again, Cheryl, going back to what you said last night, sometimes when you have engineers doing the, you know, selecting the aesthetics, no offense to engineers. But sometimes it's not exactly what, you know, maybe what would be the best, um, best selection. So, so let's, um, let's continue to have this conversation, I think it's.
Meredith, just, sorry to jump in, to just, this might help you a little too, like, um, maybe, and not, again, giving, I guess, other people work. Maybe what Josh and Tim could do is craft a little paragraph, a summary of what we all just said. Because I do think we're all behind support and stuff, it's maybe, maybe the devil's in the wording of the details. And if we can come up with something fairly benign to to do what Maggie just said, we could all just vote on it and move along and say, let's put it on our list.
That sounds great. Are we all in agreement?
I'm staffed, Kim prepares.
That would be great, Josh, thank you. So moving, um, so now, um. The next, um, the next item on our list is to finalize, um. What we're going to try to work on and possibly vote, I don't know if we'll be ready to do that. But the East Milton zoning RFP for distribution to potential respondents. Josh, can you pull up the redline version? I think that's, we've. Can sort of start, I think the best way for us to do this is to really go sort of line by line. Because I think, um, I think we can come, I I think we can come together on this, um, pretty well. Great, so from the beginning, I, you know, I, I probably made this, this first sentence. A little bit more, uh, clunky when I added historic in there. But I do, I like that we're just not saying East Milton Square is just a densely developed. Because I think what is densely developed, that could be, you know, Quincy, that could be a a high-rise downtown, you know, downtown. And I don't, it is dense, but it's compared to others, um, I think it's not, um. I don't mind putting back relatively, I don't know how others feel.
I like relatively, because it also says residential neighborhood, but we're really focused on the commercial district. And so, you know, I think we have to be careful, East Milton's, we're, what we're focused on in in this zoning is really the business district. And East Milton Square, it's as a term, is more than just the business district. And so I don't know if we wanna kind of think about how that is phrased. Because, you know.
Better word, that's what I'm thinking too, there's a.
Yeah, I agree, and Cheryl, along those, just to add some more to that, like, if you travel down through East Milton. And you drive down through our, my neighborhood, um, and then you drive behind, um. Kind of here in school or in other areas of the town, they're very similar, warehouses are not on top of each other. And we're not high-rises, and we're not fifty-unit condos, um, at least today. And so, you you know, I do, I have been on other boards and I've been on other committees. And I've heard the word dense, density in East Milton thrown around a lot. And, you know, I am for building, you know, equity in this town, allowing more people to come in. But I also don't like when people throw away the word densely around, because, uh, I mean, our town is very uniform across the town. There are scenarios with many, many, many acres behind houses. But I live on, like, my, they, all my neighbors, we live on a pretty good-sized lot, just like you would find, you know, on Camp Nav or anywhere else. So I don't know.
Yeah, I'm just sorry, just, what do you, we all think, I mean, we all know that this is focused on the commercial district. And perhaps the, uh, transition from the commercial to the residential places where it's been business for decades and decades. But still residential zoning. Why don't we say, instead of just saying East Milton Square is a, that first sentence. You know, the commercial district in East Milton Square, you know, and then, you know. A buts, you know, um, single family, primarily single family. Residential. And then I, I can't.
Can I, Cheryl, can I just make a comment? I I I think the sentence as it was was fine, and I, my opinion is include relatively. You, whomever suggested you and Rich, i- it's fine, I.
The the one problem with it, though, is the way it's written, um, let me try to see it in my mind, without the new redline. Said East Milton Square, even relatively densely developed, historic residential neighborhood that is home to town's largest commercial district. That's not what what Cheryl just said. What Cheryl said is what we're talking about here is the commercial district being pretty densely, you know, is relatively densely, um, developed. What we're saying here is, East Milton is relatively densely developed historic residential neighborhood that is home to a commercial district. So if you're talking about the commercial district, you should start with the commercial district. If you're talking about a residential neighborhood, you should talk, talk about a residential neighborhood.
I think that's where the beauty of it being mixed use as a proposal comes, comes into this search.
But we're not there.
But they, um.
But this, the area in which the focus of this effort is, is defined as the business district. And the immediate surround, and is, and the immediate abutting areas. So we're not talking about all of East Milton in this work. We're not talking about, let's say, Washington Street or, you know, some, um. Other streets that aren't part of the commercial district unless they're like immediately contiguous to it. So.
Right, but isn't mechanic street included?
Mechanics maybe, but there's a, there's a lot of streets in East Milton that aren't included in the business.
Franklin Street might be included in a tiny portion, but Franklin Street's a rather long street. I don't know, it just, like I said, I guess my, my thought was, I I think we're talking about the commercial district. And ch- taking the commercial district and talking about mixed use. But the way it read was, you you were talking about the residential neighborhood in East Milton, that's not, you're not talking about the same thing.
I, my, okay, my opinion is, we're, we're making, where the first paragraph is a description of the area. And it's an area that is a combination of commercial and residential. I feel like we're trying too hard to wordsmith the first sentence of the entire document.
Do you wanna put this back relatively and leave out historic residential? Because it's not historic in the same way you think of Milton Village.
You've gotta change the head, you're talking, the the heading of this is background and project description. And so, let's not talk about things we're not, I mean, if you wanna give a background of the, of the region, uh, or the community at large, that sounds wonderful. I think you need it.
I think that is, I think it is important, and I think it does, it does state the residential neighborhood. That is also home to the town's largest commercial district.
Wonderful, I'm just saying.
I, I think we just put relatively back, I think we're, I think we're good, because we're, we're giving a general sense of the area.
So, so the background in project description is, East Milton Square is relatively densely developed historic residential neighborhood that is home to the town's. And then you're talking about the district, you're not talking about.
Yes, and we're gonna.
So when are you gonna start talking about the actual project description?
Well, it's, it's down below.
Yeah, well, we'll get to that, because definitely, yeah.
Okay.
Well, then I, if you want to, we can get to it down below, I, I disagree, and I sent comments back. Hope everyone got to see them.
I kind of like Cheryl's, I, I kind of like Cheryl's proposal, um, I, but I don't know, I, I took out relatively, because I thought maybe there was just really too many adjectives. Um, but, um, so I don't know, to your point, are we fo- um, I like the idea that it's focused on the commercial, and I, because I kind of feel like that would give the existing residents a little bit of peace of mind, that you're not looking to go into their neighborhood and all of a sudden take it over.
Yeah.
I like the idea of focusing on just the commercial.
Should we move on? I, I think we-
I think it's important, Mer- Meredith, though, and so I don't mind moving on, but this is live and, this is live and recorded. I just highly recommend folks, if they, um, if they feel differently, to, to weigh in by emailing.
I, I agree, and I, I don't mind rewording this and changing this, but let's, I think this is an important um, piece of this background, so, um, let, let's think about how we could better word this. I, I think we're all, I'm, I'm open to doing that, so, for sure. Um, and then, so moving on, so the next item was in a 33-unit mixed-use project at 440 Granite, which has been withdrawn. I don't mind leaving that in, you know, they're obviously gonna know that, you know, we, we will be discussing other projects, so-
Yeah, I mean, sorry.
It's gonna come up-
It's only withdrawn from site plan review by the planning board at this time, it's not withdrawn from other town bodies, so-
From us.
I, I think we need to leave it in, uh, and take out which has been withdrawn. I think we could say, once you finish that, I can, I can see back the language, Josh. Um, you could say which is under review, because it is still under review at Bud and ZB A. I mean, they're waiting for their hearing, I understand, but-
Yeah, I think that sounds, that's fair.
Yeah, my only reason for taking that out was, um, what if it doesn't go through? You know, or maybe it's not 33 units. I felt like it was a little too specific, and we don't have a concrete project that we know about.
I'm not opposed to taking out 33 units and just saying a mixed-use project.
All right, that sounds better, I think I like that, just not leaving-
Would you like to also delete 892 units relative to Franklin Street, um, or would you like to maintain that?
Well, was 90, that was approved, though, wasn't it?
Yeah, I would leave that in, that's-
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
All right, is everybody good with that first paragraph? And, and again, we can come back, even, you know, even this evening, if we can come back to that first sentence, um, if people have thought about it. Um, so the next, so this, uh, you know, I sort of like the idea of creating more charm and character, you know, and bringing back some of the charm of, um, in historic railway village. I mean, there is historic, there's significance to this, because this was the oldest, the first railway, granite railway in the country, which is really, you know, very historic. So, you know, we have a national register district in that area, um, but I don't mind leaving to enhance the historic railway district.
I'm fine with leaving it here.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with it, I mean, it's a tiny piece of what we're talking about. Um, but, I mean, I'm always, I'm always interested in hearing what people have to say to bring back some, like you meant, like, the way you said, a charm of the past, um, you know, it'd be interesting to see, I wouldn't want to see people force a lot of granite into the area, but, uh, I get it.
And it doesn't have, yeah, and it doesn't have to be like a total reminiscent of what a, the railway village, but it's kind of a modern spin on, on, you know, a historic site, some charm with some modern-
Yeah, you're, you're basically telling, you're giving a nod to it, to whoever's reading it, and that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, great. Okay, so moving down, we can sort of jump through the town of seeking consulting services, that it's, um, that paragraph was good, um. And then two options, and then we, we, that had been taken out, and just start with draft zoning.
That's fine with me, I'm, I'm really opposed to the next change in that sentence about calling out just goal one. Um, so, um-
And so, yeah, so I had a sort of an idea, because I liked having that in, but I, I hear Cheryl, what you're saying is that there's more goals than, you know, that, could we, could we address that by saying 2015 master plan, which includes the goal?
Well, I guess, you know, um, the, the goals work together, and so you, in order to preserve something, you have to anticipate change and plan for change, because if you don't, then that, that change is just going to happen like the 92-unit 40Beats, you know, or something else that you might not like. So, what this is saying is we're gonna freeze it in time almost, which is, I don't think what we want to, this zoning to do. And so, um, you, you know, the goals, like I said, the goals work together. So if you want to say something about preserving the character while also planning for its future, then I'm not opposed, but I think you've got to look at all those goals, because this isn't isolated by itself. And there's not a priority on the goals, you know, um, so, I, um, I, I just don't think that that, that is like, um, not setting the right initial tone in my, in my view.
Sean, you have your hand up?
Um, I do, not on this particular, uh, topic, I do, I do want to talk about this particular section, but, um, I, I, I may as well mention my point. Not with respect to what Cheryl just mentioned, but that first paragraph, to me, um, and whatever we write there, I don't see, the first bullet below that, to me, is not necessary. And the reason I say that, at least we, we referred to the, the master plan and we refer to the Barrett Report as, uh, what we want to respond to, and then we put a bullet in below that reads, "Draft zoning regulations should generally correspond with and enable the vision for East Milton," in the Barrett Report. Uh, I, I, it feels to me like we're stressing the Barrett Report, and I don't see the need for that bullet, given that we have already stated above that the Barrett Report and the master plan are the reference documents.
I would agree with that, Sean.
Me too, I cross that, because I thought it was redundant, too.
That whole bullet seems to be, that would driving emphasis to the Barrett Report, if you're, if you're to review this as a consultant.
That's why, it's, that's actually consistent with what I was thinking in terms of goal one, is drawing, by putting that in there, is drawing a specific, um, to, one specific, um, statement in the, in the master plan, whereas we're not drawing any other specific statements about the plan or the Barrett Report in this initial paragraph. That's why I don't think it belongs there, because those reports should stand on their own, and those, and the, and the goals should stand on their own, the Barrett Report stand on their own. So they, we want this to build off of those things, and then we want draft regulations. You know, once that, we will work through the process to, to arrive there. Uh, but I don't think we want to prejudice the process by being like, calling out one thing versus others.
Right.
Yeah, so maybe that's ill-placed, um, maybe I thought I, um, thought that needed to offset that first bullet point, so if we got rid of that first bullet point, then perhaps that, um, number one doesn't have to be there, but I actually really like, um, I really like that statement whoever, um, created, I, I thought it was a great summary of the town and why people moved to Milton, because we still have this small kind of, um, town atmosphere. I mean, I do like what Cheryl said about moving the future, and that's what the, um, the master plan, I think the, um, the tagline is, you know, preserving the past for the future, or, you know, and, um, so maybe that reference point should go up. Maybe, maybe we don't have to say it's goal one, and, or maybe it can go up to the top paragraph that we're kind of struggling with, that I feel like the residents of Milton, that's why we're so protective, because that's what we feel in that statement. Got it. But I'm okay, if you don't want it there, you know, you don't need it.
All right, should we?
I'm not, I don't know.
I do like, um-
Meredith, I think one thing, now that you can see it, um, without that in there, is just really a simple statement, it's the master plan and it's the Barrett Report. It kind of goes to what Sean was saying, I think. To add detail to it, all of a sudden starts to editorialize those reports. And, you know, just seems like we don't need to do that here, because that's, that might be the, the job that we want the consultant to do, is help us work through those.
Could, could we add one, one word, um, the, respond to the goals of the 2015 master plan and reference the work?
No, because I think we also want the work of the East Milton Working Group. You know, that group did a lot of work, and it was 25 people, and it's, it should all be given equal kind of review by the consultant in understanding the progress from the master plan to the work of the group to the actual report. I mean, really, this should be, you know, that was the, the ULI Technical Assistance Panel Report preceded the East Milton Working Group, um, but those are all documents that are referenced, um, I think later in this, um. You know, one of the things I would say is that the master plan itself said one of the recommendations was to continue the study of the, of mixed-use, um, zoning or overlay in East Milton Square, as well as the other business districts. And then we did, we have continued to work on that, you know, so it's, it's progress towards that, so. I, I don't know that you need to say and reference it, because that-
That I, yeah, um, so Josh, so I think we, we did agree that we're gonna take out one option, that first paragraph, Josh? Because I think that'll not distract us from-
And I think picking out the using the vision statement is, I'm, I'm fine with that. Again, it's big, sort of, it's more detail. And those, uh, the, taking out the two options is fine with me.
I agree.
Yeah, so I don't know, and I just looked that up, that, that little logo, it's preserving our past, planning our future.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought that was great, you know, and it has a little clock on it, um, so I don't, I don't know if you think that would prejudice the, um, consultant, but I feel like maybe that could go in the top. I, I get what you're saying in this, this section here, it did get a little bit messy, um, um, but maybe that tagline needs to go somewhere, so I think that was a good one.
Uh, I'm, I'm not opposed to the, that sentiment of that tagline, you know, that's what I feel like is important about the plan, so. Just want to figure out where to put it.
Come up preserving our past, maybe following the master, 2015 master plan?
Is that specifically the sort of, the subtitle for the master plan, Cheryl?
Yeah.
Uh, it's a tagline in the title, I believe.
Okay, so I could-
On the bottom of the page.
Yeah.
Why don't you just make a note here, Josh, to come and figure out how to add that in, that's consistent with the title?
Will do.
Now, Josh, make sure you get the planning our future part of that.
Indeed, I, I didn't want to write it incorrectly, but too close, so I, I will write it correctly once, once I come.
Okay.
Uh, this, this purple edition is just moving from one area to the other, so that, that should be-
That's fine.
An issue.
Do you want to do, do you want to make that sort of a line item, like a dash instead of, oh, you just did, oh, there, okay. Okay, no, that looks good.
I'm not opposed to adding that to the, um, data review, the railway.
Everyone feel similarly? Right?
Sean, you've had your hand up again, I'm sorry.
I should lower it, I don't have an attempt, so, sorry.
All right, you saw my comment about eliminating the, uh, involvement of the, uh, master plan implementation committee? I don't know if you had specific reasons, Maggie, why you wanted to do that?
Um, yeah, so I kind of put myself in the consultant's, um, position, um, in that who would I be reporting to? Um, so I'm reporting to, obviously, the staff, I would assume that the staff would be the first, um, people that they would be in touch with every day, and then, um, and then the planning board. And then I just sort of assumed that the master plan implementation committee naturally comes under the planning board, so I just thought if I was a consultant and I was sending out, you know, information or gathering information, um, would I have to be sending it out to all the staff and all planning board and, and all the master plan implementation committee members? It just seemed like it was, um, a lot and, um, for the consultant to do, but, and also kind of redundant, because I sort of feel like MPIC is, works collaboratively with the planning board anyway.
Yeah, the benefit of including the MPIC in this kickoff is the experience of the MPIC with Milton Village. Um, you know, the planning board was kept abreast of that work with the MPIC being the lead, right? But, um, the planning board was involved in various meetings for that before it got totally handed over by the MPIC. I think this is just a role reversal, where the planning board will be the lead, but the MPIC could have a role still, so, um, I don't see it really as being an impediment for a consultant, um. And I think, um, the, the MPIC committee members have talked, um, over the years about how after Milton Village, they'd be ready to continue to work on that goal of these plans in all the business districts in East Milton, so it's a big part of the master plan itself. And I see it as a slap in the face to the MPIC, honestly, to take it out of here.
Right, so I apologize if you took it that way, because that's not my, was my intention. I just thought, like, I was, if I was, um, if I got this, if I was a consultant, it just seemed like there, as I said, just a lot of people to report to, and I just sort of thought the planning board and MPIC worked alongside each other, um.
You know, I, I, I understand why, sorry, Rich, you put your hand up, go ahead, no, you go.
No, I, I just, just to throw this in, because this is why I, I, and I don't, I might be wrong here, so Josh-
I I just, just to throw this in because this is why I, I and I don't, I might be wrong here, so Josh and Cheryl, you're on it, please correct me, but I think that's um Maggie, what you what you're saying is underneath, I don't think that's correct. I think the MPIC exists for town meeting and we are, they're appointed by a collect by both boards, the select board and the um planning board, but they don't work for the planning board, they work for the town meeting. And so I think it's separate, but I could be a hundred percent wrong. And if I'm wrong, then I get your, I see the point and it makes sense.
The MPIC had its own charge um and it's the implementation of plan. Planning board is one piece of the plan, but it's certainly only one responsible party. The select board's another responsible party, but there's many others as well, including departments and independent boards and commissions in town.
Sean, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. I I see this as um this particular task as the charge of the planning board. And um there were probably plenty of boards that and plenty of groups within the town, including the uh the MPIC that uh we could rationalize why they should participate. But I I see this as our responsibility as a board. I don't see this as being um in any way disrespectful to the master plan implementation committee if if they are not part of this. I think this is our responsibility and it's our board that should be part of that kickoff meeting. And I I do think it should be uh our planning department and the planning board. And I I happen to agree with Maggie here, I don't think that inviting the members of MPIC to it is is necessary or appropriate. It's, this one's our responsibility.
Yeah, I just think you, it's it's amazing actually that you you have an interest in narrowing the participation when I hear mostly members here talking about expanding participation in work. You know, and um the committee that's largely had a lot of success in doing this kind of planning and zoning work that would want to be excluded in especially in the context of our last meeting and talking about the membership of the committee. And all of a sudden, a lot of interest in this committee, uh suddenly after seven years of being in existence. I would invite you all to come and attend our meeting on Monday and tell the the rest of my committee members of of your feelings here and why you would recommend going this way.
So I did, um, sorry, I did look up um, you know, when town meeting established um the committee. Just to familiarize myself with it and it says that um um like the town meeting document reports of the um that MPIC reports to the planning board and to the select board and they report to town meeting. And I've heard um that MPIC is only implementing the implementing zoning. So I went back also just to make sure that I was understanding it correctly back when Tim originally proposed this and I kind of forget what date that was, I had it somewhere, but and he said repeatedly that it's you're the planning board's driving the bus, it's whatever the planning board wants. He he just repeatedly threw out, I think we had two meetings on it. And so that's why I was just, um, you know, again, I I don't mean to disrespect MPIC at all, but I was just looking at like the process and what um the original warrant said or what town meeting voted on and it was just that they were report supposed to report to the planning board and report to the select board and town meeting. So I don't, I I don't, I hope no one takes it as um disrespectful.
Just for what it's worth, I, no, yeah, thanks, no, I I and I'm, you know, not disagreeing with folks. But I, yeah, I think you're looking at the October fourteenth, Article thirteen. And in the first paragraph, it says said committee is expected to report to the planning board and select board twice annually that talks about reporting to town meeting. I take the word report there and I'm not a liar. But I take the word report as that's what they're supposed to do, they're supposed to come to us and report on what they're doing to 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 advance, to let us know what they're doing. They're not reporting to us in a means of, you know, they're taking our direction, right? They report in that sense to town meeting, they got their charge from the vote and they were built and put together for ten years to carry out the plan that was voted on. And so they are a town meeting committee and my understanding usually have to determine, so who gets to I remember when I was in the work committee, we used to think about this too, like who's gonna, who's gonna like decide who goes on that committee? And obviously it was decided that the select board and planning board should have equal, you know, say there, so. So I don't think, they're not really reporting to us or the select board, they're reporting to town meeting. I I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm just, I just want to, that's my view of it. And so I would never agree that they should be cut out of anything because they are the town meetings committee that put together to do this, so they should have, you know, they should be taking part in this, they should be talked to. When whoever we decide, you know, gets to do this, they're gonna be, I would imagine, be talked to and met with. We're talking about a kickoff. The kickoffs, in my opinion, are usually more the barrier and, you know, I mean, I guess my other question would be is well, no, I'm gonna hold that one, but yeah, I don't know.
So I had a thought, Josh, you, I have your hand up, so I'll, I know you, I would like for you to speak. So I don't necessarily have an issue with this because certainly I think the goal is not to exclude, you know, MPIC by by any means. What what I observed just from the last, from the Milton Village, and I I think this just might have just the, it might have become a little bit, the lines might have been a little bit more gray. Because Cheryl, the time you were chair of MPIC and the chair of the planning board, so you were probably, and I think you were doing a significant amount of the work too, by the way, just um credits to you. But that the lines got a little bit blurred where it ended up being that the MPIC sort of took the charge and sort of ran with it, you know, initially. And then, and things really got, a lot of work got done. And then it came to the planning board sort of late at the end, um after a lot of work by by MPIC, um certainly. But the problem was when it came to the public and the public hearings, I think that's I think it blew up a little bit and Cheryl, you, we were at the same meetings, but but you know, the neighborhood really got sort of upset because of what they were seeing with scale and density. And I think the planning board really hadn't had control of the of the process and um early enough that.
I guess I would.
And I'm sure you'll disagree, but I I I'm saying it from somebody who was a resident who um attended the meetings. You know, I wasn't on the planning board, obviously, at the time, but I'm really trying to keep this as as much of a positive, um, and and so keeping.
I was gonna say on the on the um on Milton Village.
Yeah.
The planning board was very much aware of what was the MPIC was doing. When I became chair of the planning board, I offered someone else to take my position on the MPIC and no one else would wanted to do it, um so I reluctantly remained chair of both. So the other thing is, is the planning board was brought up to speed, we had joint meetings with MPIC. We had joint meetings with MPIC and the select board so that, you know, the select board and the planning board were very well aware of what was happening. And by having the MPIC do work was we did, we dedicated a lot of time, we dedicated meetings, but that was the only thing on the agenda for many meetings. Planning board's not able to do that unless we get no applications for any other work in town for the next year, which I doubt will happen. And so it's um it it allowed us to advance uh that work perhaps more quickly than other work might, that it might have gotten advanced otherwise. And and as far as public, you know, we had a consultant, MAPC. And we had as much outreach as was done is done for any other public meeting. Um, and you know, in fact, you know, we did, we contacted every property owner in um in Milton Village, we contacted the condo association and eighty eight Wolf and so forth. So I do beg to differ in terms of the public outreach. What happened is, you know, there's somebody who misrepresented what the zoning was going to do and then you know, this is what I've seen as a pattern that happens. And then there's a lot of outcry and then, um, you know, you have to kind of go back and and um and begin the process again and, you know, it's the the same kind of thing, well, you know, can happen regardless of who's leading the process. You might benefit from lessons learned in Milton Village. Um, I don't want to belabor this.
Yeah, and I think what we've learned, which going forward, is that build out analysis is really an important piece because it was people could actually visualize what was going to be there and and really realize. And I think it's going to be the same issue, it's going to come down to height and density um with with around zoning.
For what it's worth, though, we didn't get that out of it, Cheryl did that on her own time, so we, none of those none of those folks that we hired did that, eh, Cheryl probably put in countless hours putting that together. I don't know, we just finished talking about um design, you know, the design guidelines. I like how it turned out, so I definitely don't want to belabor that either, but regardless, you're, when we start talking about East Milton, I'm probably gonna have some 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 opinions and so on, everyone else in this neighborhood. And you know what, none of us are gonna get everything what we want. And that's what happens in every community and every town and every planning process. And the only thing I can say is, like, from my experience, let's include them, include people. Let's get everybody on in there, let's talk it out and have a really good process, because the process is what's gonna make it smooth, not who's sitting in the room.
This is absolutely not an exclusionary um effort or initiative. You know, when you read into task two, uh let me go back. We're simply talking about a kickoff meeting. It's a kickoff meeting, it's not the conclusion, it's it, we we have five members of our board. I have a high level of confidence, especially where Cheryl is a member of MPIC, that we can represent what the initiative is being asked to do. Cheryl can certainly represent the point of view of MPIC for a kickoff meeting. If you read down into task two, where it reads under uh item C, working with the staff and the planning board, propose and execute a public outreach and drafting process that allows for multiple readings and check-in points for the public and the planning board and the master plan implementation committee. We're not excluding anybody, we're simply talking about a kickoff meeting. If this becomes the type of work that we have to have twelve people together to conduct a kickoff meeting, we are gonna take a very long time and we to get through this process. It's just a kickoff meeting. No one's gonna be excluded from it.
I was referring to Maggie's email, which said she wanted all reference to MPIC removed, so this.
And I don't think we agree with them.
So just, you know, just want to follow up on some of those comments, so. I I it's just, I think it's just my experience in kickoff meetings and in the way I've 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 run them myself. Kickoff meetings, in my experience, are usually you bring all stakeholders in the room. You have a high level conversation of what we're what we're about to do, what we're about to bark on. And then you break away and you have lots of separate meetings. And maybe you have one final meeting at the end where you all come back together, but usually a kickoff meeting does take all stakeholders in a room and gets everybody kind of on a theme. Here's the theme of what we're looking to do, let's all get on the same page. It just really gets everybody unified. And so I I I don't agree that um having too many people in a room to kickoff, like a kickoff is the wrong thing. Actually, in contrary, a kickoff is actually where you're supposed to have more people in the room. And in the future meetings, you do them separately. And so I guess Cheryl, what I would say is if you're the chair right now of of that, and I would be fine with you, you know, representing them, if you're not the chair, you should probably talk to the chair to see if they would, I mean, maybe that's the question, maybe the whole committee doesn't need to be there, there's seven members, but is there a chair? Do they want to be a part of it? Because I do agree, sometimes it can get a little unwieldy if you have too many people in a room. But just for folks listening, I and it's just how you represent, how we manage kickoff. Kickoff, in my opinion, should have every stakeholder in the room.
Rich, as an example, if I could, and I I apologize for jumping in ahead of Cheryl. We 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 just did this, we we just put Meredith together with Arthur. Rather than taking ten people, eh, we we were able to take the chair of two boards. And I feel like we've accomplished something uh efficiently.
Yeah, I mean, with all due respect, that's wildly different. What what you're talking about is, and I was one of the people that recommended to do that, not bring us all in. And, you know, we started talking about that and then we went forward with it. I said that because you're talking about an agenda for the year and Meredith is the chair. That's the chair's job to 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 start doing that, and that's why I recommended it. And so, but this is embarking on something that's going to change an entire neighborhood. And one of the things, one of the problems that we have in this town is, you know, people look back and say, Jesus, we should have done things differently. Or or the proponents of a different agenda say, you could, you didn't invite people in the room and you didn't do enough. I'm just saying, in my experience, when you have something titled a kickoff of a project, so a project kickoff, that typically includes all stakeholders and you're talking about themes, you're talking about what we're looking to accomplish. If I'm off base and that's not what this meeting is, I totally am fine with that. But I'm just saying, if there is anybody that could potentially be a stakeholder in this, I actually think we sit back and think, you know, who are the stakeholders? I mean, do we want to invite the chair of the select board? I'm fine with that too. Any stakeholder should be in a kickoff meeting.
Rich, invite the community then. I mean, it's a kickoff meeting.
John, it's kickoff meeting for a project. This is not something I'm making up. Look at any project, project management handbook, this is what you do, this is like, this is, this is what you do. In a in a kickoff in a project, you bring in stakeholders and you get them on the same page. This is not something I'm making up.
All right, so maybe with that should be a different term uh terminology. Because if you're looking at what it says again, can you, it's if it's really just to to that kickoff, how the process is going to work more from a procedural point of view rather than discussion of outcomes and goals and so forth, then I think it could be handled actually doesn't need the entire board of the planning board, it probably could be representative from the planning board and the planning department. And, you know, I I think the representatives from the MPIC, you know, I don't see why that's a problem, but you know, it, if that's truly what that is, if it's more of a kickoff, I think that what you're thinking about, Rich, then it needs to include, and I, in fact, this kickoff might want to include somebody from the select board, given this, the importance of East Milton Square. But if it's something more about kicking off the whole process, then I think um, you know, a broader broader input, I think, to what your point is, Rich, would be would be beneficial, so you want.
Cheryl, this is, this is zoning that that the planning board is developing. So ultimately, we are responsible, we are, but.
I understand, Meredith, but can I, sorry.
You know, you're interrupting, I I I'm gonna finish, sorry. This is zoning that we have decided the planning board is going to take the initiative on, but we absolutely want the implementation committee to um to give ideas, suggestions, you know, to be part of the process. This is no, in no way, but you, I believe, are the chair, so you would be the representative of the master plan implementation committee at this kickoff meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. So I just want, what I just wanted to um to say is that um the zoning is difficult to get accomplished, as we all know. And so, you know, sharing um sort of the advocacy of the zoning is actually beneficial. You know, so if the MPIC is a part of the process, the plan, there are people who pay attention to the planning board and some who don't. There are some who pay attention to the MPIC and some who don't. And, you know, so if it's a a collective that is broader, I think the the chances of passing the zoning are greater. You know, because ultimately, it's the town meeting that's going to decide this, whether this zoning gets passed.
Absolutely.
And they're gonna be interested in all the detail and they're gonna be interested to know that a lot, there was a there were a lot of ideas discussed, debated and 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 in the end, you know, consensus achieved. If they think one body, you know, sort of excluded those, excluded some or wasn't you know, interested in that broad consensus, then it'll have a harder time passing town meeting, in my opinion.
And that's really critical, I I agree, Cheryl, and that's where I think if we move down, there's ways that we can include the master plan implementation committee and um and I I I want to see that that's done because. the master plan implementation committee. And, um, and I, I, I want to see that that's done because absolutely, um, we need, we need full support. Um, Maggie, I don't know if you had your hand up or Sean?
Uh, Sean.
Yeah. Uh, I, I, again, I, I just want to reiterate again, this is not excluding anyone. Uh, this is simply a kickoff meeting. This is our charge. Uh, I believe every board should stay in their lane. Um, it's our responsibility. We're simply kicking it off. We, we are the ones that are responsible for this guideline. If the MPIC was responsible for it, they'd be the one drafting the language. We should take the responsibility to conduct a kickoff meeting. I believe if MPIC, uh, is going to have representation in the meeting, if something that, that's something that Cheryl's interested in, I'm not advocating that they become a part of it, but absolutely Cheryl can speak for any point of view that she has, uh, that might be consistent with the MPIC. We, there's, there's nothing wrong with having a kickoff meeting where the planning department is responsible for this, with just the planning department and the planning board. Nothing wrong with it. There's nothing exclusionary about it. This whole process, it, we're asking the consultant to draft a process of engagement. I, I, you know, we're making more of this, uh, than need be.
Let's don't forget that the MPIC funds are the matching funds for this work.
That's fine.
So I just, um, one of the,
I'm sorry, one last thing. Sean, it's fine. If the planning board were funding some initiative, you wouldn't want the planning board not to have any input into how it's going to be done?
Cheryl, Cheryl, do you not feel, do you not feel as, as a member of the MPIC board that you're going to be present for this kickoff meeting? Is the, is?
That's fine, Sean. I guess what we're talking, you're focused on the, um, the kickoff meeting and I'm focused on other places where MPIC is struck out. So I just,
Cheryl, let, let me, I, 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 as I said, the only thing that I'm in agreement with is that the MPIC doesn't need to be present for a kickoff meeting. The, I, I agree with what Meredith said earlier, so please do not, do not, do not, uh, I, I, I simply said the kickoff meeting. That's all I said.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry, I misunderstood, Sean.
Yeah. And so maybe, you know, I'll take ownership of this, that I sort of, again, in my, you know, I went back and reviewed what Tim said and what was, um, indicated to us that it was our responsibility and we were driving the bus. So perhaps I was a little too quick to strike through every reference to MPIC. But I was also quick to change because I didn't like the and/or, you know, um, where it said, ki, conducted kickoff meeting with the Department of Planning and Community Development. Or, I mean, it could have been or the members of the planning board. Um, and so I didn't, and not that I don't have full trust in Tim and Josh, but I, we, we are going to be the owners of this, you know, years down the road. People are going to say, oh, that planning board had those five members and look at the mess they created. And I don't want to create a mess. I, I, you know, I want to create something that, um, we all can be proud of and that the residents are proud of what we created. So, you know, unfortunately, we've seen staff come and go. And so I don't like to see that or. I wanted to see and. And to your point, maybe I was a little too quick with the strike through, but I was just referencing sort of what Tim said, that it was our responsibility for this.
Okay. So, all right. So I think we, um, should move on. We should keep this as is because this is just the kickoff meeting. And then let's, let's make sure there's ways, you know, how we're collaborating, um, and in consultation with MPIC. Um, and that, that's clearly demonstrated, so. Um, so draft, going down to task two? Draft dimensional.
And red was the, what was the planning? With Josh's amendments, is that right?
Um, I think those were actually Tim's, were the red.
Okay.
Yeah, Tim, Tim is red and these are, are more, um,
Yeah, that was,
we just got to wanting to get rid of smart growth and this is just a syntactical one on, on the division statement.
Right.
Okay. And then maybe I, I completely agree with you on striking the, the or and C here.
I guess this C is just another discussion. Is this a, a point, it's up for discussion? Is this a, um, a, a place where the planning board would like to work with MPIC?
Well, what I definitely like is that we kept in, that it's very clear that execute a public outreach and drafting process that allows for multiple readings and check-in points for the public, planning board and master plan implementation committee.
I mean, I think here that developing the plan could be the department and the board.
I'm accepting the deletion. It just wants me to also, uh, ignore this. That is recorded. It's just not behaving on, on the Word document.
Can you scroll up one more second? Sorry, I just want to pre-read one. Sorry. Okay, I'm good.
You know, I think that, um, that before that, can you scroll back? Sorry. And D there.
Kind of give people motion sickness. I'm sorry, folks.
Yeah. It seems to me, um, there should be a check-in with the select board, um, before final zoning language. So.
Is that, is, um, Cheryl, is that typical for zoning language?
Well, again, it's my, my suggestion that to achieve success at town meeting, the more bodies that support the zoning effort, the more likely it is to get to pass. So we've always asked the select board to weigh, to support something we're working on. We've asked the historic commission to do it at times, you know, we've asked, sorry, Rich.
Warrant, warrant committee sometimes.
Warrant committee, yeah.
Yeah, to, sorry, Charlotte, that's how many, but the reality is when we put this forward, it's got to be either supported or not supported by the warrant committee and the select board. And it would be awful for them to not support it.
Right.
And I think I have respect for the highest elected body in town. It's, you know, um, they have the authority to, to prepare zoning themselves, um, under the state statute. So, I mean, I, it seems to me it's an important district and they should, they shouldn't just be left to, here's the final zoning, we're done.
So I was sort of thinking that the MPIC is responsible for checking in with the selectmen because they are, you know, they, they have an, that's their charge. They were appointed by the selectmen as well. So maybe not put the selectmen, the select board in this one, but with the understanding that we know that MPIC will be checking in with the selectmen. And if it's at that time, the selectmen have, um, any concerns or questions or input, they actually then give that to MPIC, who then forwarded to us.
I think that's a bit too circuitous, circuitous for, um, for the highest elected body, myself, because if the planning board's the lead on it, I think it should go directly. I mean, in the spirit of the conversation Meredith and Arthur have been having, is that, you, you know, it shows due respect that they be consulted before the final zoning is drafted.
But it's, it's a good, it's a good tieback, Maggie. I just, my, my opinion would be, uh, to, I think what I was hearing, you know, you folks say a few minutes ago, uh, was we're driving the bus on this, this is ours. And so it should be on us to check in with everybody. This is not a hard process to check in with them. It happens every, I mean, we do it every year that I've been on it, on everything we do.
Yeah, and I understand that. And you do hear, um, boards, you know, even at town meeting, oh, well, what does this board have to think? And what does this board think? But for, I don't know if it necessarily should go into an RFP. It's definitely, um, courtesy, and it's more than courtesy, you know, there's, um, a tradition of doing that. I'm just not sure if that has to go into an RFP, illegal, which is a legal document.
Well, if, if this helps, Maggie, if we don't put it in here, I'm afraid they won't give us cost to show up at the meeting. Right? Because we're going to want them to show up at these meetings at, right? Maybe. Um, you know, they, they could kind of like, you know, Doc, like we listened to Dawson. I mean, they, they, I don't know. Maybe, you know, if we get this done, well, it's not going to be this year, but wherever the chair is, are they going to be the one that goes to the select board themselves? Um, and then runs through this at a select board meeting? Or will they go with whoever the consultant was? Personally, I would think something this size, this scope, that's, that chair would probably want some help.
And was that in, um, the, um, document for the zone, the consultant for Milton, Milton Village? Was that the selectman, the selectman referenced in that document?
Maggie, I can confirm whether they were referenced in the RFP, but they were certainly an integral part, especially in this sort of zoning preparation as, as far as Tim is related to me. Um, it would add no sort of weight, um, to, you know, the, the shoulders of our consultants. And keeps with that tradition that we, as the planning department serving at the pleasure of the select board, um, would be sharing it with them anyway.
I was just going to say the same thing. I said, even if it's not in the RFP, I still would be doing it. I would be checking in. You know,
Yeah, I think what, what Josh just said, he has no choice. The court for the select board, not us.
But, you know, again, it's, it's our, you know, it's our,
Josh is employed by the, um, selectmen. He's not employed by, yeah.
Yeah, so I think,
I, I think we all realize that the, the only way to measure success here, or, or maybe the most critical way to measure success, is that whatever is created has broad support throughout the town from elected bodies and from the residents. So we're not going to exclude anybody. We would be fools to exclude anybody. But I am concerned that we're writing an RFP that's going to cause a consultant to see something that's so, um, involved that the consultant is going to add dollars, you know, because the process that we outlined, um, is going to cause him to think it's going to take a heck of an effort to get there. I, I don't believe,
Josh just said that he did, that he and Tim have discussed and advised that he didn't think that would be the case, Sean? Is that right, Josh?
Staff, we don't anticipate, at, at the very least, this, this consideration, um, would, would impact, uh, the cost estimates from, from them, uh, at all. Um, so I, I wouldn't place a cost concern on, on staff.
It would not.
No, sir.
And again, I hope the selectmen don't take this as disrespectful, but I'm not, um, uh, I don't support them being referenced in this RFP. And you guys, we can take a vote on it and I'd be perfectly fine if you guys don't vote in me, but I just wanted to put that up there.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, you know, we don't, you don't have to get into it, but I would be curious to hear, like, behind, what's behind that, just because, I mean, I mean, the select board is, like Cheryl said, they're the highest like board in town. They're involved in everything. Uh, well, you know, they have to be. And usually, you know, if the boards, you know, they go to the select board and they'll ask their opinion and the select board will talk about this. Um, there's no, like, we all agree, they're going to be part of this anyway. Um, I just, I just view, view, view RFPs as I like them very succinct. I like them to say what we're going to do so that people that are being on them understand what we're going to do. The reality is, and I'm going out on a limb here, Josh can correct if we're wrong, everybody that responds to this has done this probably before, or else they wouldn't be responding it, and they know what we're looking for. Um, and so this isn't like, I'm sure they understand what cost of putting these things.
And so maybe that's just me and this is the first one I've been part of. So, um, so that's, I just keep going back to what was said and what we voted on was this is ours. And, um, you know, we all kind of do stay in our lane and, um, um, and I just don't think it's necessary because, because they are going to be part of every step of the way. Um, and because of the relationship that Meredith has established with the chair, um, I just don't think it's necessary here. But that's a, again,
I can do either. It doesn't matter.
I know. It, yeah, it's, it's up to you guys.
We will be reporting to them anyway, so if, um, we delete it, 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 it won't necessarily change, um, staff behavior.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to die on this vine, so I don't have,
And that's fine. You can take that out, but, but know that, yeah.
Yeah. Well, just, I mean, obviously Josh, you and Tim will work with this person to set expectations anyway. And, you know.
And we want this to pass town meeting. We want something.
Right. Yes.
We've been there before.
Yeah.
Great. Are, are we ready to move on to task three? I, I, I recognize how much time this has been on us and I don't want to,
No, this is good. I think we're making good progress.
How far? I'm just, just to check. How, how many tasks? I don't,
Three of three. It's only three.
That's what I thought. Okay.
And again, so my, my, um, changing the word community to, um, neighborhood and, and maybe it's just, um, in the process, um, that I think to you guys' point that we need buy-in at town, at town meeting. And we need the neighborhood of East Milton to buy in to it. So maybe the first outreach is really the stakeholders, which is the neighborhood and the property owners and all the boards in town. And then, and then maybe at another meeting, then it's the broader community as a whole. Because there are so many people in town with, um, so much experience, um, that we wouldn't want to exclude them all. But maybe just at the first meeting, meet with a smaller group, just like, you know, anyone in East Milton Square. Um, or maybe on the other side, um,
I think if you want to call out neighborhood, you need to include the business community.
Yes, yes.
Because it's the businesses, the business district that we're talking about, which doesn't have mostly residents in it. It mostly has business owners in it and property owners who, um, don't have residences in there. So to me, they should be the first, the property owners might be the first group. And then, I, I don't know who you want to define as neighborhood. You know, is it across 93 is included? I mean, the, to me, it's like anybody who's in the community, I agree. I mean, some have suggested that there should be uh, polling, um, that can be done of the precincts, East Milton precincts. I mean, one thing that designing the community process is that there are, there's been books written about this. If you get people who will participate in community meetings, um, mostly people who, um, aren't supportive of an, an initiative because the people who are supportive of it are less motivated. And the other thing that they talk about is that people don't want to get into like battles with their neighbors. And, you know, frankly, East Milton has, um, had a few of those over the last year since the Falcone project was originally proposed. And so, you know, you'll get people who just won't participate because they don't want to get into a fight with their neighbor. So it's really important to design a way that's not just a, a, a community meeting, but online, uh, surveys, um, uh, other ways that consultants might suggest, uh, to engage, um, I, I would say the neighborhood and the community overall, because it is the business district and residents are patrons of the businesses in the business district. Um, and so it's, um, it's important to get that as broad a, uh, input as possible.
Yeah. Thank you, Cheryl. Rich, you have your hand up.
I think Maggie, did you still have yours up or did, because you're,
Oh, no. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
All right, just want to make sure I didn't cut in front of you. So I, it's funny, I, so I don't want to cut anybody out, but I also, so like when you said the, let's add the business, that makes a lot of sense, right? They should be there. I don't want to go deep here, and I don't think what I'm about to say, I'd want to see reflected here because I don't think we need to go this far into it. But I almost envision this meeting is open to everybody. But let's, I mean, we, I'm not saying they'll let us, but they've been very good to us in the past. But we've got the first card of regional church that seats a lot of folks. We could, I mean, like, let's have it in East Milton. This is about East Milton. I do believe that everybody should be involved, and everybody should be allowed to come. I wouldn't want to see people get cut out. But I really like when communities go to that neighborhood and have the event. It does really allow people to, I mean, I've been to events in East Milton, and people in the community walk up to it and hundreds show up. So I don't think we need to represent that here, but let's make it very open to say that we're going to have, you know, something for all to join.
Great, so should we add to that line, the planning board shall facilitate a neighborhood workshop?
For all, yeah.
Including for a neighborhood workshop, including businesses, somehow just including the business community.
Or just do a workshop with all interested parties.
Yeah, you could keep it as big as that, what Maggie just said. I mean, I don't, I think everybody.
The workshop is item B already, where I'm editing. So we're just supporting that.
Yeah, because I would never want to tell somebody that lives in Milton Hill they shouldn't come, or somebody that lives on, like, on the other side of town. I think everybody should be allowed to come and listen in and weigh in. But I also think the business community, and I think, that's why I say, for the nod to the neighborhood, have it there, you know?
Maybe that neighborhood, I don't know if you wanted to, you know, that's up, Rich lives in the neighborhood, so I would defer to you if you want to keep that in or.
Yeah, I like that idea to have it, the neighborhood workshop, I really like it. I'm not speaking for any of my neighbors, but I would imagine that folks would appreciate, you know, having it close by. Not that, not that this is like New York City and it takes an hour to get somewhere.
Would it be, would it be clear if we referred to it as the residential and business community? Your, you know, neighborhood doesn't strike me as a word that makes a business, a business operator feel like they're part of the neighborhood. But isn't that what you want? You want the residents, Rich, and you want the business community as well to feel.
Yeah, I like what you said, that's a good change.
Instead of neighborhood, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, for, not this is.
Yeah, that's.
But for what it's worth, I'm sure, Maggie, you feel this way in your neighborhood. I mean, I think everybody around, most people around here would think that, feel that like the fruit center is part of our neighborhood, right? You're kind of ingrained with them. But I agree with you, that's a good comment, because this is an RFP, and we should be very specific in our words.
I'd suggest changing featuring, changing from featuring to including local businesses and residences. Thank you.
That's great.
Thanks, Josh.
I think most are semantic or discussed. Section E, I think, might warrant more discussion.
Yeah, I think this is where it's important that the broader community be terminology that's maintained. Because community encompasses everyone, includes elected boards, include residents, include business owners. Community is just everyone.
I agree.
And why wouldn't you want feedback on the design guidelines?
Yeah, as I said, I think I.
I would include that back.
Yeah, I just went through and took them out, so I apologize for that.
None needed, we all do that.
And you can change the order if you want, you can put planning board before.
It probably should be Cheryl, since it's. You know, we, I think, have the highest level of responsibility here.
Yep, no problem with that.
Thank you all for your feedback on this, staff, truly appreciate it.
So I do, I did just have two quick comments, and I'm not going to, and it's getting late, so I don't want to belabor them here, but I would appreciate if, if Josh, you and Tim could think, and the board might not agree with it, but I would like to hear maybe a comment on changing the word kickoff, because I think Cheryl was on to something. That's not a true project kickoff meeting, and that's why I think I was a little at odds with what we were doing in that meeting. And so it would be nice that we didn't call it a kickoff meeting, because I think when people read kickoff, that, you know, kind of like, they start thinking about typical project kickoffs, construction kickoffs, things like that, and they have, there's things you do in those type of meetings. And the other thing is, I really would like somebody, and I wouldn't mind taking a stab and boarding it to folks. The lead into this really does matter to me. I am probably the only one on this board that lives on East Milton, and it does, I think the words matter there, and I think they'll matter to residents. And I think we got to be very deliberate on what we're calling this project. Again, I talked about it at length at the beginning, I know I wasn't in the majority on that, but I just wanted to restate that.
Great, we can think about that. And I think we should all sort of think about, you know, the initial first opening sentence that we, you know, and we don't have to do that tonight, but if there's a better way that we might build a word that we can maybe send a comment to Tim on suggested opening sentences on that.
Could we, in order not to delay getting this out, could we take a vote that's subject to a revised first sentence? And I would be happy to delegate that language to Rich and Tim and Josh and Meredith as chair, so that we don't have to wait another two weeks just for the first sentence.
I'm fine with that, I mean, I'll be honest, I would have, was going to abstain on my vote. Not that it would have mattered, I think, but I would have, just because I feel pretty strongly about those couple things. I like where we're going on this, but again, this is, this stuff is going to go sideways on us a couple times. There are going to be people that are going to be very unhappy, they're going to come way in. And I want to make sure, I want to make sure we go about this the right way. And we're pretty dialed in on what we're doing, what we're saying, and why we're doing things. And this is just, again, it might not matter as a folks, but I live in this neighborhood and, and we hear a lot of things about the way our neighborhood is mentioned in the public view, and some of it's not so great.
So Rich, it sounds like you want to have a chance to rethink those couple of points that you made. Do you want to circulate a revision to Tim that, and then we would talk about it in our next meeting? Is that what you're proposing?
I'll go this way, if you guys are okay with that, I would say yes, I'm a yes vote, and I'd be on board with that. And if not, I mean, it's just, I'll probably just abstain and we move on.
Cheryl, I am fine if, I support what you just said. If Rich and Tim and Josh sort out how that first sentence reads, I'm entirely fine with it. And honestly, I don't see any value in abstaining from a vote. We're a board of five, we should either, you know, agree or disagree. You obviously can do whatever you want, Rich, but I don't, I'm not so worried about how that terminology is. Let's get this done and let Rich, let Rich work through it with Tim and Josh and Meredith, and I'm fine with that.
Okay, Maggie?
Yep, I'm fine with that, too.
Sorry, Meredith, I'm co-opting you, please go ahead.
That's okay, no, I'm in full agreement, too.
So we need to entertain a motion.
Motion, yes, so would you like to make a motion, Cheryl, on this?
Sure, I would like to move that we approve the RFP language as amended this evening and authorize member Beeler to work with staff on a revision to the first sentence and the description of the kickoff meeting. I think that covers it.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Maggie?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys, good work on that. Now, the, we have the approval of the decision of a minor amendment at the 193 Central Ave Site Plan Approval. And I see Sunny, who we can bring in, and let's see, Tom, Todd, Marion? We let in Marion, she can introduce whoever else we need to bring in, but I think that's all I see. Or Simi Verma, maybe it's me. Can we bring them into the meeting? I'm sorry, I don't have the ability to unmute. Is there anyone available from Access TV to bring in Mary McCetrick? And Sunny? Josh, do you have that ability?
Both coming in right now.
I do not, it's, it's.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, thank you. I'm just waiting on Marion to join. And a quick note, Todd, he might not join, because he mentioned he has to leave at 9:30. So if he doesn't, if he's unable to join, he gave me his notes, so I'll summarize those.
Sunny, is that Todd Gany?
That is correct.
He's in the attendee list, I see.
Okay, so he's available for a few more minutes if he can.
We'll let him speak first, yeah.
And, you know, share his comments, and then we can continue, thank you.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Sunny. Marion is in? Yep, welcome, Marion, thank you.
Thank you.
Marion, if you want, we can get started. If Todd is able to join, that's great, otherwise, I did have him send me a summary of the follow-up that he had with the arborist based on the last week's call. So I'm not sure if you have any, I guess, opening statements, Marion?
Well, not a, excuse me.
No worries, so maybe what I can do is I can chime in on what I got from Todd, and then Marion, if you want to add anything to that, feel free.
That sounds good, yeah.
Perfect, so let's do that. So thank you, everyone, for the great feedback and interaction last week. As a follow-up, Todd did consult with the arborist and went over the recommendations and all the feedback. And this is what I have back from him. So based on the arborist's recommendations, and my assumption is all of this was provided to the panel members, so you've had a chance to review. If not, I do have these open on the computer and would be happy to share my screen for any of these items. But let me summarize real quick. The first is, the feedback from the arborist was to make a slight change on the trees that, you know, I know they were recommended, Meredith, last week, which were great recommendations. And his feeling was the trees he's recommending are native to the area and would have a much higher likelihood of surviving in all conditions, including if there's a drought. So that was feedback or consideration. The trees he recommended are also on the shade tree, I guess, approved tree list. So he did confirm with that. The other thing that came from the recommendation from the arborist was that he would recommend using trees only eight to 10 feet high with a caliber no greater than three inches. And his reasoning for that was they'll have the highest likelihood of survival. He said anything bigger than that, upon transportation, half the roots are cut off. So they will need a lot of water to basically have any survival long term. So they might last initially, but over the longer term, he was concerned. So he recommended staying with eight to 10 feet, which is in line with other trees. And to basically compensate for discussion that we had last week, what was recommended was planting four trees. So three in the back, one in the front, which is where the dead oak is being removed. And even for the dead oak, what he recommended, the tree, he said, would no longer interfere with the power lines or the utility lines. So in the future, as the tree grows and matures, there'll be less likelihood of interference with the power lines, which was partly the issue with the overhang into the street. So those were his recommendations from, I guess, a follow-up. The drawings that were submitted to the planning board include the locations of where the trees are being recommended, three in the back, one in the front, as well as the species of the tree, the size. So that's all provided as backup documentation. So that's a quick summary of basically the feedback from last week and the arborist feedback. And the arborist is the one who will be planting these. So we have not only his recommendation, but making sure it's executed well. So maybe I'll pause and see, Marion, if you want to add anything. If not, if the members have any questions, I can bring some of the drawings up. If not, you must have received the materials from the planning board.
I don't have anything to add, I'd wait and see what questions there might be, and I can help if necessary with those.
Are there any questions from the members?
Not necessarily a question, but a comment. I I don't necessarily agree with the arborist's point of view. I've spent almost 35 years building and developing, and I've planted many trees greater than eight to 10 feet in height that certainly survived. But Maggie has more expertise than I, at least in providing trees. You know, my responsibility was to make sure that they survived. And if I, if I were to tell a landscape architect that they can't spec anything bigger than eight to 10 feet, I think a lot of them would tell me they're, they would disagree with my perspective. So in the interest of having a sizable tree, I disagree with the arborist's point of view. I'd like to hear Maggie's opinion.
Yeah, I was going to say I disagree with that, too. An eight to 10 footer is really just an average tree. It's nothing really any great significance. Homeowners can come on up with their trucks and can put an eight to 10 foot tree in the back of their truck and take it home and plant it. And I don't think it's a proportionate size for a replacement. And just as Sean said, you can dig trees very safely, and they dig them all the time on college campuses and move them from one section of the campus to another to allow for room for growth. So I think a 15. fifteen, a minimum of a 15 foot tree would be appropriate. But even a 20 foot tree, and even a neighbor down the street, he put four very sizable 20 foot October Glory Maples in, and they're doing spectacularly well. And my other comment was just about the, the choice of trees, the Amalankiers. Yes, they are native, but I don't think they're necessarily a replacement for an oak tree. An oak tree is a legacy tree and an overstory tree. And they get to be over 40 feet tall, and they have presence, and they provide a canopy for the street. Where an Amalankier is an understory tree. And I love Amalankiers, I think they're really pretty. They get a great little spring bloom and great fall color and great for the birds. But I just don't think it's an appropriate tree to replace an oak. I think you're better off going with, you know, a maple or another oak, or.
What about a Princeton elm?
Yeah, an elm, a tulip tree, those are all native. And there are other non-natives that are, that work well too on the street because they're disease resistant. And I would probably plant it as close to where they're getting taken down as, as possible. Last week, they did say they were gonna remove the stumps. So it shouldn't be that much of a hardship. Because I do think providing a canopy as close to the road is nice, and it's good, nice for the neighbors because then it will minimize the impact of the, of the building.
And I thank Maggie and Cheryl for the comments. Maybe I'll quickly add, and then if Marion would like to add something, if she can. I think the locations of the tree, Maggie, are exactly where the trees are coming out, both in the front and in the back. Regarding the size recommendation, I'm no expert as the arborist or even the experience that you have and Sean has. So what I would say is, I'll be certainly open to going back to the arborist and deliberating with him. If we are able to accommodate that, that's, that's obviously something we will do, as we discussed last week. And, you know, if it means, instead of planting four trees, we plant five, you know, but they are in the eight to 10 foot scope, because that's what we discussed last week. You know, we said if we are going to plant smaller trees, we'll plant more number. If they're going to plant a larger tree, we'll take a smaller number. So, you know, we did not go with a minimum, which is three. We said, okay, we'll at least do four. Like I said, if we are able to accommodate more, you know, I would say I would prefer that route rather than trying to bring in, again, I'm not going to say I don't value your feedback Maggie and Sean, it's just, I'm basing it on the arborist's recommendations. So he's, for me, he's the expert, he's knowledgeable about this. And if I'm taking his feedback, you know, that would be my proposal in how we maybe make this, I guess, both appealing to the, the board members as well as making sure we are planting something which will not only survive, but will have maintenance from both watering, as well as the future of the trees. I'm sorry, I think Richard has his hand up, so maybe he has a comment as well.
Actually, my question is for other board members. Maggie, those type of trees, do those have berry fruit?
Which, which one? The Amalankier gets a tiny little berry, which is great for the wild.
Oh, it is, okay.
But it's, it's not, it's not a messy tree.
Okay, good, that was my point. I've seen some messy trees get put near a street, and it causes like a crazy mess, and I just didn't know of this. Sorry, thanks.
What I will say Maggie is, you know, like I said, I'll certainly take your feedback on the tree families that you have proposed. Back to the arborist, talk to him, make sure they're on the shade tree approved trees. And also, one other thing I would like to add, Goddard Corporate has feedback, they have some approved trees, and just because of the young children, so they don't want certain trees planted which are in the vicinity, which would have any choking or other hazards. So as long as we meet all that criteria, you know, like I said, let us take that offline and come back to you. If the arborist was on, he could have probably answered, but I'm not an expert for me to get back to you today. But I will take that under advisement.
So Simi Verma has her hand up, or his hand up?
I'm not sure, I don't see her on, maybe she's still in attendee, if we can include her, invite her, that'll be.
Yes, can we move over, Simi? And I'm, I'm seeing Todd still on as a.
Oh, he, he might not have logged off.
Yeah. He's, I just don't know if he is trying to get in. So can we bring Simi over?
While we are waiting for Simi, okay, I see her on now, that's perfect.
Okay, great. Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to add what Sunny said, that Goddard would not allow a fruit tree just because I run the Watertown Center, and children pick up everything, they are so quick. No matter how quick the teachers are, they are faster than us. They would pick up anything they can get their hands on. So I do have the list on my email if you'd like to see of the approved list, and perhaps any, any fruit or nut bearing tree is not allowed in a school, on the school premises. So perhaps that, that would definitely, unfortunately, won't be allowed by Goddard for us.
I'm not as concerned about variety, I'm just more concerned about size.
Okay.
Okay, Maggie, I was getting caught up with it, and I, I was, my thought was that you were thinking that, like a bigger, like a more robust tree, what you said legacy was being taken out, and you wanted to see something more, like something more, how do you know the right word? Something, something more put in. So, yeah, I just, I mean, you know this stuff better than I, I defer to you. I, that's what I was worried about too, about, I wasn't thinking about berries being a hazard, so that's a good opinion. I was thinking about a mess. It would be interesting to see what's approved, or what's on that list. What are we supposed to? I don't know, Meredith, what are we supposed to be voting on here? Are we voting, or are we just giving an opinion?
We were voting on the replacement trees that were coming back to us, and they're recommended. I think if we could just improve the size of the, the three trees, and if we could swap out for a more, a little bit more of a, a tree that would provide a shade, a canopy, a street canopy. So I mentioned the Princeton elm that's on the Shade Tree Committee, because those tend to grow very linear and grow up and over the, the, the power lines. So it, it gives that canopy, but, but it's, it will grow, and it grow, it will grow.
So that's, that's for the front, right?
Yep, and they grow very quickly. There are some that just were planted down in the Milton Village, and they're, even in the drought, they're just, they're taking off, so.
I got, I got lost here, so tell me, like, what was the tree that they were saying that they want to put in, what was the name of it again?
Amalakier canidensis.
Okay, and so what we're now finding out is being that that does have fruit, you wouldn't be able to use that anyway, is that true?
I don't know about.
It's, I don't think that would be a tiny fruit. Yeah, it's not.
The problem was that it's a little smaller.
Yeah.
And that was purposeful, because you know, as you know, there's another oak tree there that's leaning over power lines. We talked about taking that down, we agreed, no, we wouldn't be doing that. That the developer will trim that tree, and, you know, try to make sure that it's safer. This was, in conversation with the town, we discussed taking it down. So that's one reason, the, the replacement tree next to it, replacing the oak that's dead, there were thoughts of how is that gonna affect power lines? So, you know, I would say, if you think, you know, if you go back to your arborist, you say, well, what about an elm tree? They grow up kind of straight, they don't necessarily cause a problem. I don't know, I don't know anything about this. This is not an area of expertise for me. We do need to, we need to move on and know that you are comfortable with the way we're proceeding with this plan. So first question is, what's the species of tree in the front? Would we consider an alternative as an elm if the arborist, you know, you understand the reasons the other one was chosen? I mean, I, I'm feeling a little, I mean, either town was involved in this discussion as well, but I don't think they picked the tree. The concern about power lines is a real one.
It is on the street tree list, it's the shade tree.
It's definitely on the street tree list, we're planting an elm in the back. And the other trees, the hornbeams are very large trees, and a beautiful tree, I think. So I don't think your, your concern was how big is that tree gonna be when we plant it, is that correct? You would like us to ask about a 15 foot rather than 10 foot?
I feel like all the trees should be of significant size.
I, I am a little bit speaking as a complete greenhorn. If you're taking a tree down, a big dead oak, and you're chopping up the trunk, I've had that done in my own yard, the roots persist for a long time under that tree. So, I mean, the bigger tree you try to plant in that same, is it really possible? I'm asking Maggie, because I know that this is her field. Is it really possible to do it right in the same spot?
Well, if they're removing the, the root system, they said they were removing it.
Grind it out, right?
Grind it, I know I've had that done, but it's amazing, they're all over my yard. I mean, it's, I'm just, I just wanna make sure that this is, the tree will be healthy when it's planted. So I guess the more experienced expertise that looks at it, the better. So you would like us to go back and ask about putting an elm there? Would, that's what you'd like us to consider, correct? Does everybody else agree with that?
Again, I, I'm not hung up on the variety, because again, we should just keep, move, you know, they need to get this wrapped up. Whatever, whatever variety they feel comfortable, I'm comfortable with, as long as it's on the street tree list. I'm just more comfortable with a larger size going in.
So, okay, so canidensis isn't necessarily out, but you want a bigger sized tree to be planted?
Oh, well, that variety just is kind of weedy, it doesn't have a full canopy, it's, it's.
With a canopy.
It's, it's not a tree, it's not a street tree. It's just not a street tree.
So you really want another species in the front? I know you're saying that's not a big concern, but.
Yeah.
Sunny, are you willing to go back and ask about another species in the front?
Yeah, I will, Marion, like I said, you know, I'm taking the feedback and advisement, and we'll go back to the arborist and consult with him and then come back with his, I guess.
What's the name of that tree again in the front? I'm sorry.
It's called Amalakier canidensis.
I did look that, I'm, okay, yeah, I agree with you, I, I, so I'm just Googling. I, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't look like a tree, it looks like a, I mean, it looks like a big bush, am I wrong, Maggie?
Well, it can come in multi-stemmed or single-stemmed, so.
You can trim it back.
There's one end, daylily corner, it just is.
Cheryl, can I say something, please? I know we've been with you, because I know the, the rest of the board is, I haven't met them before, and I know we've been with you for the past two years, almost like, it looks like we all, we keep coming back to you guys. I just hope, you know, that everyone is aware that this project is already delayed for over two years, and we are literally losing a lot of money and millions, like, and the delay is on, it's obviously no fault of ours, and every time we are going back, you know, and the trees, you know, we are proposing, we are literally paying out of pocket. The fire was not our fault. You know, every time, the trees, three out of these are not being proposed by us. So I just, I just want town to be mindful of that. Because every time these changes are being proposed, you know, we are paying out of pocket for these changes. Every time we go back to the arborist, we are paying for these changes. So Sunny and I would really like to move forward, and we are just hoping that town would cooperate with us. You know, and just, and we would really like to open this pool to help the community.
Missed opportunity, maybe we should have asked the arborist come to these, this meeting or something.
Oh, I think he was, he was. We had a very long discussion, and he didn't make it.
Yeah, but I, I do remember, like, in press conversations, we talked about, Maggie's talking about, we want, you know, these are substantial trees, we want substantial trees. I heard Meredith say we'd like to do, you know, these things to grow over the street. So these aren't new concepts.
Right.
We're talking about, that's why I say it's too bad that not everybody's in the room right now, because I'm sure a couple of questions, couple of answers, we take a very, a vote. I don't know, like, I'll throw this out there, I don't know, Maggie, Sean, Cheryl, Meredith. I, I don't know this area, and everything that Maggie is talking about makes a lot of sense to me. I mean, we just, like, kinda like, I don't know, like, how do we advance this? And have those questions answered, so that we don't have to wait a month for it to come back onto an agenda? I guess that's my question, Meredith.
Well, as I understand it, the only change you're talking about is a, is a change in the type of tree in the front. And you're talking about larger trees, yes.
Well.
If the planning board wants these trees to be planted as larger trees, despite the recommendation of the arborist, you need to tell us that, I, I mean, we're trying to get a decision.
I think we can get a decision September 8th, and we certainly have no intention to delay.
Does that mean that you can't proceed at all with your construction?
So I'm fine, I'm fine voting tonight on it. I, I don't, I think we need to give them flexibility. I feel for them, you know, they're trying to run a business. And I'm, I'm fine not holding them up. And I.
Can we give an opinion? Can we give a, like, vote on it?
I mean, we, we hear what you're saying, but we're, what I'm saying is, you took a vote to allow us to take the trees down, but now it's contingent on the plan. And I don't wanna see this delayed, I, we will see whether, well, I think we understand what you're looking for.
Yeah, Marion.
We'd like approval, yeah.
Sure, Marion, I, I agree, and I, and I, I wasn't aware that the project has, this has stopped the project. If it has stopped the project, I'm not, I wasn't aware that it has it.
So Sean, it is delaying the project because they cannot proceed forward till the tree is taken down, back where there's, they're pouring the foundation, because it's actually right there. So what, I think we can, my feedback, and I concur with Simi, and maybe Maggie for your consideration, you know, the university is maybe not a fair comparison, if you don't mind me, because they have millions of dollars in endowment.
Yeah.
We are actually, literally paying, as Simi said, we are borrowing from our home equity to pay for this project. Because of the two years of the delay, the scope has expanded significantly. So from a financial perspective, like I said, it's great feedback, but it really hurts us personally on our bottom line. Not saying that use that, you know, as a sympathy, but I'm stating facts. You know, this is a huge hardship for us, which we are enduring, we are committed to the project. Like I said, great feedback. What I would love to do is if the panel is comfortable voting, you know, giving us the approval, we will take the feedback and come back to you, saying, okay, if we can actually plant larger trees, we will do that. If not, like I said, maybe we plant four trees instead of three in the back, and one in the front, so five. Because that's something we discussed last week. You know, okay, if you're gonna plant smaller trees, do a bigger quantity to offset. So I'm just saying, please be flexible and work with us, rather than saying, oh, it has to be 15 or 20 feet. Because I honestly don't know what the cost is, how it will jump up. Keeping in mind it's coming from our pocket, we have nowhere else to go to do that.
Sunny, just a couple of comments. First, I just wanna make sure, in the last discussion we had in the planning board meeting, we were emphatic about size of tree. This isn't the first time we've talked about size of tree. So an eight to 10 foot tree is, is a very small tree in terms of what you're proposing. So I, I wanna make sure that we're not being viewed as giving mixed messages to you. We, we had talked about size of tree in the last meeting. I did not expect that we'd be offered an eight to 10 foot sized tree. So that's my first point. My second point is, the cost difference between an eight to 10 foot sized tree and, and a tree that would be a 16 foot tree or a 14 foot tree is not that significant. I think Maggie could probably tell us the difference. It's, it's the minimus, it probably costs more to put it in the ground than it costs to actually, the difference in, in size. And, and third, if you're not responsible for those new trees, if your contractor had a responsibility to protect that tree, then you should be addressing that contract, you're gonna let the contractor pay for the cost of these trees rather than absorbing it yourself. So I, I, as a, as a business owner and what you're trying to do, I, I sympathize with it. But, you know, if they are responsible for it, it shouldn't be your cost burden. And I don't feel like we should have to accept a smaller sized tree, given that we've lost the opportunity to maintain the tree that was committed to staying there. And I am all for coming to a conclusion tonight. If my fellow board members can, then I, I am all for coming to a conclusion tonight, and allowing everything to move forward.
Yes, Cheryl? You had your hand up, Cheryl?
Yes, I wanted to come back to something Marion said. I just looked at the meeting minutes from the August 11th meeting. And Marion, you said that they can't take the trees down until they have an approved plan, but the meeting minutes don't reflect that exactly. So.
That's my question, I mean, I. That's my question, I mean, I, you took a vote, and we, so that's my question. That's what's hanging us up here.
Yeah, so I'm gonna.
And we proceed on that and come back with the trees that we can do, based on your discussion tonight, because we gave you the plan, now you've given us feedback. Or are we still hung up and we can't take the other trees down, so they can't proceed, that's what I wanna know.
So I guess my sense was that I don't recall them being tied together. My understanding is that we were authorizing you to take the trees down while we worked on coming up with replacement trees. And is that the way my fellow board members recall this?
It is.
Yes.
So I don't think it should be any delay for you, because you can take those trees down tomorrow. And come back to us on September eighth, with the, taking into consideration my fellow board members' comments.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Cheryl, that's great to know.
Very helpful, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Sean, for your comments as well, um, so, certainly if, uh, there was, I guess, evidence that the tree was destroyed by the contractor, believe me, we would have gone to him. Uh, unfortunately, when I look at the arborist recommendation or report, what he says, well, again, if I'm, maybe I'm not reading it right. In his report, it said, uh, that there were already signs of decay, uh, fourteen feet above the ground level. Uh, and then the root system, which was compromised, yes, that's, so these are two separate events. Uh, based on what the contractor shared with me. So, because last week, when the discussion was ongoing, it almost seemed like it was pointing more towards the contractor. Not necessarily neglect, but the fact that the contractor had to, uh, for pouring the foundation. Uh, what he told me, those are two separate things, that the tree already had decay fourteen feet above. So unfortunately, it will come to us from a cost perspective, and the fact that the cost is not that much more, makes me feel better. I had no idea, I thought a bigger tree would cost much more and cost prohibitive. If Maggie's confident that the larger cost is more to plant the tree, and not necessarily the size. Uh, like I said, we'll be happy to accommodate, uh, we'll work with the arborist. The fact that, uh, you have confirmed we can move forward and take the trees down, we'll come back to you on September eighth with a replacement plan, uh, both with the size, as well as the tree in the front, so I just wanted to share that with you as well, thank you though.
And do you think you can get that plan, uh, Sunny, before, to the board, uh, at least a week ahead of time? And we could hopefully get some feedback as to whether there, there's a lot more discussion to help us plan, you know, and help the planning board plan the time at their meeting?
Yes, Marion, I think one is very easy, the first one is just the size, uh, you know? Instead of eight to ten feet, planting larger trees, for me, that's a very simple fix. The second one is, instead of the tree being recommended in the front, which other tree we can use? So for me, I think these are both easy to, uh, resolve and come back to the planning board with, uh, with the, I guess, updated proposal well before September eighth.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Rich, do you have one more last thing?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to mention, I, I agree with all my fellow board members in their statements. I also appreciate, Sunny, you, you giving us the, uh, it's very easy, right, so I join meetings twice a month, and, you know, in between, I'm not dealing with the stuff that you're dealing with. So I can appreciate your concern, and I'm glad you brought it up, it's always good to let us know what you're dealing with, because, you know, I, we, we're not looking to make what already is a long project for other reasons, a longer project. Um, so I can appreciate my fellow board members, but at the same time, we're also trying to make sure we are stewards of our neighbors and our town. So, um, I think this is a good, good solution.
Thank you.
And one final question, Maggie, if, um, if the arborist still recommends for shorter trees, like what he said, eight to ten feet, would you like for him to come to the meeting, or, um, you know, because if he says they're still not healthy, but how would you guys like to handle it? Do you think we should invite him, or do you think we should consult another arborist? Because, you know, I, I would want, you know, it would be ideal that.
My recommendation is not going to a new arborist and add cost, it would be hopefully to.
Well, I'm just trying to resolve it, so, just so that we can settle it in the next meeting.
For me, the resolution would be either going with the larger tree as recommended, or planting more trees. Uh, you know, so, for me, it would be, what's the best, good compromise? I think we have feedback, I would like to stick with this arborist. And I'm sorry, Sammy and I are in different locations, that's why we are not together, I'm out of the country. So, she's home, home, back in Massachusetts. Uh, so that's why we are not coordinated, so apologies. But, uh, my, my recommendation is we stick with the arborist, you know, we invite him to the discussion.
Making sure we have it covered for next one, that's all.
Yeah, no, like I said, you know, we'll come back to the board members, but hey, we gave him the feedback. If we go with the first option, which is larger trees, you know, we can do it. Or if he says no, I just wanna make sure the board members would at least be open to that, or receptive, that, okay, if you, like I said, you know, it's basically now his opinion or not opinion, his recommendation versus Maggie's experience and Sean's experience. We'll have to meet somewhere in between, so what is that in between? Do we go with four trees in the back and one in the front? If he's adamant that it's ten feet, and if we can convince him, otherwise, we will go with the larger ones.
Well, I'm quite certain that he does plant larger than eight to ten foot trees. Um, if he's a, if he's a good arborist, he does.
Thank you, Meredith.
Great. Thank you so much for coming, and we will look forward to seeing you on September eighth and.
Very good, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Great, um, so, last evening, for those who joined us, um, we were able to do a review of the Milton Village Design Guidelines, which my sense is that the board is really feeling really good about this document. Um, but I think it was mentioned last night that we probably want just to make sure, because it was not the full detailed document, that, uh, residents have a chance to go online and take a look, and that we would like to give, um, without extending this out for too long, allow, uh, residents in Milton to take a look at the, uh, Milton Village Design Guidelines. And have, you know, a chance to comment, um, on that, if, if there's anything that, that we're missing on that. Um, and I would open it up to the other board members to, just to see what, what your thoughts are on that. And the timeline for when we would take that vote.
Well, I suggested it, so I, I feel responsible for commenting, um, at least first, anyway. Uh, I, I don't know what the right timeline is, is it, um, is it, is it, uh, four weeks? Um, you know, I, I just wanna avoid someone, uh, someone addressing later a, uh, a lack of opportunity to comment on it. So, uh, that's my only concern, and, uh, I, I don't, I'm not sure what the appropriate timeframe is, I don't think it would be less than four weeks. You know? Uh, there weren't many that attended the session last night, we had very few attendees, but it's, I'm not sure how many watched. But we didn't have many participants.
Uh, Rich, you had your hand up as well?
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, that sounds great to me, I, I mean, I'm definitely all for, um, you know, public opinion and getting folks to weigh in, I just think, um, we should come up with, like, an act, like a plan for it. Um, only because I don't wanna, like, if we're just, I don't think we'd do this, but if we're just telling people on this call, hey, we're gonna give you four weeks, nobody else is gonna listen either. Um, so what I would, maybe what we recommend is asking Josh and Tim, I don't even know if this is what, what would be the right choice, but maybe they come back with, hey, like, here's a way we could let folks know, we'll post it, sure. I mean, I, I don't wanna go too far with this, because we did have public process. And the, what we will end up doing from this, and the reason why, that's the reason why I wanna have some structure. Is because we will get more feedback, and we will need to talk about that in a public meeting, which I would want to do, right? So if people weigh in, we need to answer them, and that could mean that we have a number of public meetings where we keep, have people come in. Um, which could add many more months to this. And so, I think, really, what we're trying to get to is, let's just make sure everybody's had a chance to look at it and weigh in. But let's just put a simple process to that. As I say, let's put some dates to it, let's already think about what type of meetings we would have to talk about it, and really dial it in.
Thanks, Rich, and Cheryl, you had your hand up too?
Uh, yes, I have two questions for Josh. Josh, is the Dodson and Flinker contract, um, fully complete now? If comments came in, would there be an ability for them to do any further work on it?
Yes, uh, Dodson and Flinker, I, I don't have the end date off, off the top of my head, but um, Dylan was clear after our meeting yesterday that he would be able to incorporate comments wi- within a reasonable timeframe, you know? Uh, two to four weeks, um, would, would fit more within our, our scope, uh, timeline, rather than several months.
Yeah, because my understanding was the contract had to be complete by the last fiscal year, which would be the end of July. The other question I had was, um, are there any, is the, is the planning department aware of any projects that might be filed in the near future?
Um, within the, um, PUD, um, we have been in.
In Milton Village.
And yes, uh, but within the Milton Village, um, uh, yeah, the area and a project that would be, uh, restricted under this, uh, design guidelines. The only project I am aware of at the moment that would be within the near future is one being proposed by Hajar, um, over the MBTA lot, um, at, at the, at the Mattapan, uh, trolley stop.
Okay, that would have a, that would require a lot of process because of the MBTA and so forth. I just wanted to make sure that, yeah. There wasn't anything else that might be more imminently pending that could fall under the guidelines, because uh, if something were filed, it wouldn't be retroactive. All right, so I guess my, my feeling is, given what Josh said, that I'd like to give it one month. We've been working on these for months and months and months, there was a public process and people provided feedback. Um, I, I don't think that, um, we need more than a month, I, I don't wanna extend the consultant out. So my recommendation would be that we take a vote at our second meeting in September.
Maggie, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I agree, um, I was just gonna say is maybe, um, it could be sent to the president of the, um, of your neighborhood association. And then it can be distributed that way, and then, um, you know, those are the, the residents would be most impacted and would have the most, um, maybe to say. And they may be inclined to respond faster, but I wouldn't wanna hold it up, I think everyone's worked really hard. I think Cheryl's gone above and beyond in all her extra work that she's put on it. And I think, um, it's a great product, and, you know, maybe some of it could be applied to other, um, places in town. So it'd be nice to kinda start, start the process.
One thing I would say, Maggie, if you reference the neighborhood association, again, we'll reference the businesses.
Yeah.
Um, and eighty-eight dwarf, I mean, they are a lot of, uh, residents there, and they have a condo association or something like that. So they have a chair of that, that we engaged with before. We went and met with that associ- or with that condo association as part of that process, because they are such a large number of people. Um, the businesses, it was a little harder for some of them, like, you're not gonna get citizens in Bank of America and Verizon to participate. But otherwise, it's a small handful of businesses, you know, the business owners, so, um, you know, we know some of them, you know, Fafoney, JD Wild. Um, Mike Roberts, you know, so it's, it's not, uh, Hajar, it's not too hard to reach out to some of those. But, um, I, I just wanna make sure we, we keep the business folks in mind when we're talking about the business district.
Yes, and Sean, you had your hand up, and then Rich?
I think the month timeline is, um, is ideal. I, uh, I guess a question for, for everyone, wh- what mechanisms are there for just, uh, sending a notice out that, um, the guidelines are complete and any remaining comments need to be submitted, is it, um, is it? I suppose, Josh, I would ask you, website, um, I, I mean, and, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna start a precedent, but I just, I'm gonna ask anyway. Do we ever put a notice in the Times, um, that, that, you know, uh, I guess, raises the awareness? Um, uh, and, and the third vehicle for communication, I receive Milton, uh, town of Milton emails constantly. So I, I, you know, that email list has to be large, I know you guys are probably all on it too, you know? Is that used for something like this? And, and I, I'm cautious to create a precedent, and, and, you know, be expected to do this in the future on everything. But I think this is pretty significant, what we have here, and, um.
Right, yeah.
I'm good with the month, I just wonder how we can communicate to people, and, and I, I echo the sentiment said earlier. I think it's a great document, I, you know, and Cheryl, you've put a ton of work into it, I, it's, this is the work that, you know, mostly can be done by an architect. It's, this is, um, this is a great document. So thanks for everything you did with the, uh, with Dylan and, uh, and the team.
And Rich, yes?
You know, I was gonna say the exact same thing, I was gonna double down on what I was saying before. Um, but I'll specific, well, start with the date, I, I'm also, I think a month is perfect. Um, but yeah, I don't know if Josh has that answer, Sean, but if not, I think he should, him and Tim should come back to us. Because maybe all the above, I've heard of all those things happening, not quite the email, uh, because maybe that's an opt-in. I was just gonna say, I don't know if we should just send this to, I mean, you can send it to a neighborhood association or a business district. But I do think this should be more broadly, and sometimes that's just, you know, hey, it's, it's posted. We've posted it, but then there's, I think what you're getting at, we should tell people it's posted, so they actually go look at it. So I'm interested in hearing that too, what some of the options are. Uh, I mean, we've mail, I mean, mailing things costs a few grand, I think. Um, things go in the newspaper, I don't know what that costs, but, I don't know, I'll stop talking, Josh, do you have the answer, or do you have to go get it?
Um, it, uh, the public process began before my time, but I, I can confirm that it has certainly been in the Times at least once, if not more. Um, and obviously was posted, um, for yesterday's meeting on town, public facing, social media, also on the town website, so. Um, it, it is highly visible, I, I can't confirm if it's been the subject of its own, uh, discreet, uh, email blast. Um, uh, that's not typically something, uh, I'm aware that Tim, uh, utilizes, uh, with any regularity, but I can confirm it with the Times. And, um, was disseminated through our, our normal means.
So, let me. I'll get specific then, maybe, and Sean, I don't know if you agree. So I agree that it's been public, and we've talked about things, but I think, and not to, um, talk for anybody, but my position would be, I think what we're saying is, um, we wanna tell people we're about to take a vote of this in September, and we wanna get the month to take the last peek at it. Uh, because we're gonna move it forward, so this is more of a, we know we've put it in the public view, it's been online, people can't see it. But again, I guess I'd ask you, Sean, are you kind of, is that, are you agreeing, are you, you're kind of on the same page, like, hey all? You know, make sure you take a look at this, because we're, we're moving this forward, this is the last peek.
Right.
Yeah, exactly, that's exactly right, Rich, this is last call, last call for comments. It's, uh, it's gonna get locked down.
Yeah, so then I would say, uh, Josh, the, not to speak new narrative, but the question would be then for the planning director is, give us some ideas on how we can do that. Unless we have.
Absolutely.
Yep.
We will, I'll touch base with Tim when he comes back on, on Monday, and, uh, we'll, we'll, uh, keep you in the loop.
That's great.
Cool.
Thank you, and last comment, Cheryl, and I think we should probably move on to our next agenda item, and, and just shoot for that September twenty-second date, so. John, did you have something?
I apologize, I do not.
All right.
All right, thanks for the. Quickly, um, just wanna remind folks, this only takes a vote of the planning board, so it's not onerous to revise these down the road if we need to. And I, my, uh, my experience would be that we might need to down the road, just as they start getting used. You know, we're probably going to learn things, and so I, I don't think we have to think of this quite as it's like now or never kind of thing. Um, I mean, I think it is a good idea to get the word out and get, um, people to have awareness, but they also might be way out of context, people who've never seen anything, they're not familiar with zoning, and it might just raise a lot of questions. So I, I, I really am interested in not delaying it too long, um, and if. long. Um, and if people do have questions, maybe they can get answers from the staff, um, so that we, you know, we don't have to have time at our meetings explaining what the intent is and what they do and so forth. So, um, that's just my caution and, um, and suggestion.
Great, thank you.
Uh, I, I support and agree with that. I, I, you know, I think we should leave it to Tim and Josh to respond to any of it that has a comment. I agree with the Cheryl. I, I'm all for getting this to a vote, uh, on, did you say the 22nd, Meredith?
Yes, yep.
Completing it. Yeah, I, I agree with you.
And we can have any updates from Tim on the 8th, on what they're able to do and, and I'm happy to try to get some things out to ADI Warf and to circulate it on Milton Hill Neighborhood Association, but, and businesses. So we can, I can work with Tim on that too, so. Great, thank you. Um, people have really been excited. I think they've been pleased by what they've seen. So that's, it's great. Um, so the, the next, um, moving to the next gen- agenda item, discussion of process for selecting nominees to the master plan implementation committee. Um, I did have, uh, the select board did meet, um, this past week and, um, and they came up with sort of, um, a list of items that they would like to see, that they voted to be part of their process. The select, the planning board will also, um, decide what, what we want our process to be. And, and I think, um, just to read, I'll, what Arthur updated me following the meeting. And I think a lot of this, um, we probably agree on, um, is that all, um, all forms, all applicant forms should be sent to all members of the select board and the planning board and the master plan implementation committee. So everybody gets to re, you know, everybody has access to, um, anyone who's applied for the master plan implementation committee. Um, they, um, that all candidates, um, oh, excuse me, first, um, they really feel, and I, you know, I've been thinking about this in so many different directions, but, um, but I think we probably would need to do this, is have a joint meeting to decide on the two additional positions and be, and have a discussion all together. Um, it could be a noon, you know, schedule a noon meeting. It doesn't have to be, but it would only be for this specific item is to discuss, um, and be able to, you know, um, discuss the different, you know, the qualifications of each. And honestly, they are all, so many are so well qualified. I, I just, I, I cannot say enough how pleased I am to see, um, just the quality of the, the applicants of just professional and background experience, um, and qualities that I think that we would be looking for. Um, so it's gonna be hard to, to make that decision and, and looking at all different options. But having a joint meeting, um, they would like to do, voted to do that. Um, all candidates would be reviewed by the, by MPIC, uh, committee and that MPIC, um, would, uh, draft a letter that they would send to, um, the planning board and the select board on who their recommendations would be following having a discussion within themselves, um, after they're reviewing the forms. And I think that would be helpful information. Um, and I know they're gonna be meeting on the 29th, Cheryl, is that correct? You guys are gonna meet? So you'll have a chance to do that because I think that's really important before we would have a joint, uh, planning board and select board meeting that we would want to hear from, from the master plan implementation committee. And one second, Cheryl, there was just one more, one thing that they felt, some people in submitting the forms, some people submitted a resume and, you know, sort of wrote a little bit more. I think because we have so many, wanted to give, you know, if somebody who put their form in early didn't realize, you know, someone else had put a resume in, we just wanted to make sure that everyone had a fair opportunity to put in whatever background information and maybe a little bit of a description on why a little one pager, no more than a one page, but if they wanted to do a little write-up of something, if they didn't have a resume necessarily, they could state why they think their experience, um, would be relevant to the work on. Uh, wanted to see. So those four items, um, were what the select board voted on for their process. Cheryl, did you wanna add something?
I just wanted to ask Meredith, because I watched the tape of that meeting, of that part, portion of their meeting. Did they determine who would do the outreach to those candidates to request that write-up or that resume?
So that would, you know, I'm, it would have to be from Suzanne, so maybe that would be part of our discussion. Um, I, I think it would be up to Suzanne would have to go back to them. It adds another level of work for her.
Yeah, I understand that she resigned though, and I don't know who's doing, who's tasked with doing that work now. And, and I don't know the timeline. So the reason I ask is if, if the MPIC is going to discuss this on Monday, we won't likely have those statements. And so I'm feeling as if I might have to defer that discussion until we get the statements.
I was thinking about that too, Cheryl.
Yeah.
Tight timeframe for people to be able to turn around.
Right.
So.
So do, do you mind following up with them and asking and, and getting back to me about when, who's going to do it and if they're gonna set a timeframe for doing it, just so
Yeah. purposes? I was, I was thinking that same thing. So that, that's important. Um,
Thank you.
Yep. Um, and the only other thing that I was gonna add that they didn't really discuss. I do think, I think that's the only way. Otherwise, we're gonna end up with maybe two, two candidates on the planning board and two different candidates, you know, and who knows? And, um, but there's a, a chance of that not aligning. So I did, I think it's good for us to have a shared discussion. I think there's things that we'll all be able to share and learn, um, in that discussion. But the other piece is the, um, how that fin- how that vote will be taken. And I think because there are so many unbelievably well qualified candidates, there's eight and we only have two positions. I, the last thing, um, that I would wanna do is take a vote where we may have someone who's really qual- qualified. And, and taking a, a yay and a nay vote on individuals, to me feels really, um, uncomfortable and potentially hurtful to somebody that we would not want, um, that I think would not, we, we may want them, if there's another position to open, to not lose interest, um, or, or have feelings that were hurt, um, because they were not selected in, in those, in those top two for whatever various reasons. And it might be just what the needs are on the board, whether it's real estate or architecture. Um, they could be selected for different reasons. But, so I was gonna also ask our board, um, that I was thinking the best way to do this is either to email Anne Marie, you know, our, what our choices would be, or do some sort of a doodle poll vote where we could go on and, and, um, and make those, you know, um, make those selections. I, it just seems
So can you find out, Meredith, whether
Right.
Their understanding is that we have to do this in public, um, meeting? That was my understanding, that in the past, it wasn't always done that way, but that the discussion can't be, uh, outside of that.
That's my understanding, yeah. We have to
Yeah.
Especially in public and then we vote, so.
We don't have to vote public? I thought we would.
Yes, we do. And I thought we had to discuss the candidates. Could you just get clarification from the select?
I will.
Yeah.
I will. Um, cause I, I know that you do, we do have to declare, but, um, I don't think that we have to take a up-down vote on each individual, but I, I will clarify.
Probably not, but if we're gonna take a vote, it has to, I would have, I would, and I'm not, I don't know. This is, I guess this is your question, Cheryl, that Meredith needs to find out.
I don't know.
I, yeah, cause I don't wanna take, we, obviously none of us can take a vote if we can't, uh, take it privately. But if we can, yeah, it's, I'll be honest, I like, I like what the select board's thoughts were. I think that sounds good. I think it would be good for us to have an opinion on what our process is, as they had, and it's, in that if somebody notifies folks to resubmit, we should tell them what the process is gonna be because sometimes these committees and board, these committees that you apply for, they are very hidden and it's either you never hear back or you are. And this one needs to be a, you know, public process. So they need to know that so that if they wanna pull it back and don't wanna go through the public process, like we all had to go very public in our running for this, but we don't wanna put, to your point, Meredith, we don't wanna put somebody in, in that world that they don't want to be, if they didn't need to be.
I think that's a good point, Rich. Um, I just wanted to point out also that, uh, MPIC, we're going to do, um, oh, let's say like a little chart. And it's like, what precinct do these people come from? Are they an architect, engineer, you know, sort of the criteria, um, that's required criteria in terms of professional. But then precinct just for diversity of part of town, which is, I think, important. Um, and I don't recall what other things right now, if, that we're going to put on that. But we'll share that with the letter, you know, with, once we have all of the information.
That would be
I know, one of the things that we requested that happened was that everybody use the same application, you know, because some applications were different than others. Um, so you don't get the same information about each candidate. So I think it would be really helpful to get the same information about each candidate. Um, and the statement should be helpful in understanding what people think that they can bring to the committee's work.
Yeah.
And if anybody's watching who applied, um, they can attend the MPIC meeting on Monday and see the work that we're doing, see the spreadsheets that we're talking about. That's the tracking mechanism. Um, so, and ask questions about the work of the committees they have on.
That's great, Cheryl. And if you could share that and, you know, once you all have been able to put that together, we have all the information, um, just to make sure everybody has, you know, there's nothing missing on yours. And then if, I was gonna also, um, mention if you, I'm assuming you would share that with the select board too, so they would have that prior, you know, to our meeting, just for conversation.
Right. I would send it to you and to Chair Doyle and have you both distribute it to the boards.
Yeah, okay, okay. So I will follow up.
I just have a question. And again, I haven't, you know, haven't been through this before, but I did, um, review the tapes and to me all of a sudden, it seems, um, like the process is a little bit different than it has been in the past. Um, and it's, I know that the selectmen are reviewing, um, committees and, in, um, trying to figure that whole, um, process out. But I looked back, you know, in the January meeting, um, and it appeared that the planning board and the selectmen didn't actually have a joint meeting when they nominated and they didn't, um, discuss any other candidates who, um, who had put their name in. Um, and, um, when I went online to look at the volunteer form, which, you know, I've filled out myself in the past, it says a resume is welcome, but not required. So again, it's not just for this, um, you know, this committee, but all committees. It, it just seems, um, like for some reason, this was very cumbersome and, um, different than all the other committees. Um, there was no, uh, like deadline as to when the, um, forms have to be in by. Um, so I'm just wondering, how come this seems different than other committees all of a sudden?
If I could reply, I'm not sure about other committees, um, Maggie, because I'm not a part of any that aren't appointed in this way. But, um, I would say that these are two new seats. So it's sort of like a new process, you know, when, and frankly, I can't remember seven years ago when the committee was first appointed, if it was done at a joint meeting. I suppose somebody could go back and look at the minutes and try and figure that out. But there's only been two other appointments since then and they've been, um, when people have resigned. And what, what I've done, what we did in the last one was Allison Quinn, who is Josh's predecessor, reached out to the select board's office and asked for applications where anyone had checked off MPIC, you know, the volunteer form where people check it off. And, um, there weren't very many. And they also were asked to rank, you know, rank them. And I think we had one person who ranked MPIC first, you know, so it really wasn't like much, it was just like, I don't think anybody in terms of the two boards thought it was, there was probably not much discussion and sort of a need to vet candidates that way. And I think that probably something, my recollection is something similar happened when Liz Miller came on in Michael Walsh's position. But I, I think the reason it's different this time is because he did two new seats.
And just, um, and, and this isn't a discussion, but it just seems odd that it's only appointed for one year. You know, I, I, you know, to your point, there's a lot of work, um, that goes into this. And, um, you know, I think it should be a two, and I know it's sunsetting in two years, but it's probably gonna get renewed. Um, but maybe there, we should look at terms, you know, maybe two or three years and then, uh,
You know, it's interesting because like when I joined the warrant committee, it was also a one-year term, but then Brian Walsh said, but we really want you to be on for three years. And so it's sort of the same idea, I think, on the master plan implementation committee. Because if, if you were on the master plan committee to start with, you're familiar with it, you know? But if you weren't, you know, there's a lot to get sort of caught up with. And if you think about it, you meet twice, I mean, you meet once a month, there's twelve times in the year. That's, that's not as many meetings as the warrant committee or the planning board or others, right? I mean, sometimes we schedule in between, but mostly it's once a month, except when we had public forums and things like that. But, um, you know, it's a point, it's a ten-year committee. That's the other thing, you know? So we're getting towards the end of the committee. Um, and it's really this idea of having the two new members was to help push the evaluation of, of where the implementation is. Like, do we get 50% done? Do we get 75% done? Where did we fall short? You know, where does the plan need to be looked at? What's changed enough? Demographics different? You know, things like that. So then the recommendation to come out of the committee after ten years is to be, um, yes or no, should we update the master plan again? Because, you know, it was like 50 years in between or something like that before. The idea is it shouldn't take, shouldn't be doing it every 50 years. Um, it did require like $125,000 worth of consultant work, which is probably like $150,000 now. So, you know, you need to evaluate whether yes, we really do need to update it, or maybe we only need to update parts of it, right? So, you know, that's kind of, um, the other thing that's a little bit different about the committee. It does have a sunset.
I was just gonna, you know, chime in. I, I feel it's very clearly that it, it's, I feel, I'll say it this way, um, but I agree with a lot of the comments you made, Maggie. Um, and obviously Cheryl, some of those, well, obviously those comments that you made. It's, from my point of view, it's, you know, I think these committees, like the town really needs to do better at some, at, at the way we ask folks to apply. I've applied to things and you never hear back. And I've heard lots of people in different parts of the town say, yeah, I applied to that. I never heard anything. And I kinda like that we are taking a little bit more of a, um, plus we have to, right, we think, for the way we run our meetings, we're taking very much a very public approach. Everybody seemingly is getting shot and there's a lot of competition. So we have to be very, I'm glad we're being very appropriate, very deliberate on the way we're doing this process. Um, but I do think in general, our committees in this town, I hear a lot that people submit applications and never hear anything. And I don't know why. And I feel like, um, there needs to be a better public process on how people are, are being asked to do committees. And I do agree with you, in the application, it needs to be a little bit more spelled out that, like Brian Walsh said the same thing to me, hey, I'd like you to be on, but I'm hoping it's three years, but it's obviously every year you have to be appointed. Well, we should probably sell people that in there so that they have expectations set on what their commitment is looking like or what they may, cause maybe somebody doesn't wanna just do one year because they know they're not gonna get anything done. Maybe they do wanna do two years and not have to fight every year. But if that's set up front on the application, it would be nice. So yeah, I, and I know that we're, obviously other people like Meredith and others have said that we're working on diversity and things like that. I'm hoping that we do a way better job in this town, the way we reach out to folks and ask them to take part.
And the other thing is, it would be nice, um, and, and probably this happened because there weren't a lot of volunteers. But now it seems like there's a lot of volunteers and, um, looking through the, the list on the town's website as to who's on what committees, there's a lot of repeats. You know, there's somebody who's on one or two or three or four appointed committees. So not the electeds, because that's different, um, but on the appointed committees. So if there's, you know, in a time like it seems now, that all of a sudden we have an influx of volunteers, maybe it's time to review Maybe it's time to review some of these appointed committees and say, oh, well, you're on two committees. You know, thank you, we really appreciate it, but now, do you mind? Do you, do you mind stepping aside at the end of the term just to give someone else a try? So I don't know, do we, do we pay attention, and we being the town, do we pay attention to the number of committees that people are on?
Maggie, I would say to reach out to Aaron Bradley and Roxanne Musto, who are working on this on the select board's office. When I watched the tape of their meeting on Tuesday, this is part of that discussion was right before the MPIC one, so I saw that part too. And they, they are very much interested in improving the whole process of committee appointments. I would definitely reach out to them.
That's a good comment, I think I, I mean, I'd like to do the same thing. I mean, it's just, in general, some, and I'll go further Maggie, sometimes you see. Some people need to be on committees for long terms, so I don't mean it negatively. But there are also some committees that people do wanna join and that they can't get into. So I was on the warrant committee for six years, should I have been is a good question. Well, we couldn't get 15 members when I was on, and so I don't think I took a spot from somebody, but I don't know. I don't think I did, but, you know, I think Brian did a great job at, at putting people on that committee. I don't know what the process is today, but there's definitely people that have been on some of those committees for a long time. And they probably should cycle out, although if nobody applies.
Right, yeah, so it's different, yeah, so I do agree.
Yeah.
Right, right. Okay, good, so I will circle back with, with Arthur and find out just on that process and going back to those candidates. Cause we wanna make sure that we give them enough time, if they are gonna be asked to resubmit something, that they have enough time to do so. And, and get back to you Cheryl on just what that timeline will be. And, and who will be responsible, so you can know what, how to schedule that accordingly.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I think we can move on to, to our second to last item. Is the discussion of the drafting of comments of 40B, 936 Brushhill Road, 16 Amor and 728 Randolph Avenue. And I think because of the time right now, when I spoke to Tim, 16 Amor Road is actually wrapping up. Now, it's, I think he said it's this week, is that correct Josh? Ahead of 936 Brushhill Road?
Uh, yes, sorry, apologies for the delayed, unmuted.
Yeah, but I think if, if we have anything else on Brushhill Road. That we should, that we should try to get it in, we, I, there were so many good, I mean, comments that people made on Brushhill Road was. Did anyone have anything else to add to Brushhill Road, and then we can move on to Amor Road?
I look at the website on the 40Bs and it looks like Tim submitted at least a memo on our behalf. Listing in bullet point form the comments that we had. I don't know if they're making any revisions, I mean. My, I also read the peer review letters, especially on the architecture, because they talk about the site design as well. And I just didn't get a sense that there were revised drawings coming. Like the peer review architect comments, you know, got to a certain point and then it seems like the applicant's done. You know, so I don't know if the idea is to try and. Make suggestions for conditions that the ZBA could include, but. I'm, is, Josh, do you know, or Meredith, do you know from conversations with Tim, are you just looking like, as if the ZBA is going to approve these projects?
Josh, do you wanna answer that? Yeah.
Tim has not indicated to me what, what the ZBA's intentions are. Though I, I, I would be surprised if they were to reject them wholesale.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is that the town's not defending. Challenges to the permits on others, which leads me to believe that they just want to move forward with the decisions on the ones that they've already done. And so, you know, it just.
Yeah, it's hard to know.
I've become a little bit cynical after having spent a ton of time writing letters and looking at these drawings on all of these 40Bs. To find that it really just doesn't help at all, I mean, or very little. So anyway, that, I'll just say I'm disappointed in the whole process.
I'm Sean, and Maggie.
Sure, I, on Amor Road. You know, when you read through the. The consultant's final review, in, in his conclusion. He comments that the applicant addressed and improved the project. Where is that, and maybe this is what you're talking about, where do you actually find that? I mean, he referenced that the architectural detailing was changed and talks about the conditions with the landscaping. But I don't know, I don't know how to find that, is it, is it, and I think he even referenced the drawings, but I don't know where to go to see it. And I'm sure, I think that's exactly what you're saying Cheryl, is. Where is the record of that?
Yeah, it's just, it's not clear to me, just, and there's so many documents. Like if somebody could say, okay, here's the final set of plans, look at these. And then if I, if those are the same ones that the peer review architect is referring to. I guess I can go back and try and cross-reference it, but it seems like the plans, the last plans were dated some time ago for, for that.
So.
Yeah, so they're all kind of that way, cause I, I actually asked Josh the same question, was, it says. Comment resolved. And I was like, where is this resolution? And, and so it is too difficult to, to find. And I had comments about, you know, of course, all the plant material, all the plant materials undersized. So I think it should be, you know, they all should be three-inch caliper size and 15 feet. They're putting in, you know, as Tim said, three gallon, one gallon, and that's totally undersized. Amor Road, I noticed on their steps coming out of their front door, it just looks like it's cement. It, you know, it looks like it's a building in a city. And, you know, we wouldn't, you know, necessarily have cement, uh, front, front stoop. And, you know, on Brushhill Road, I do think. That architecture, I don't have the languages Cheryl does and as Meredith does. But I feel like that whole building, because it's in, you know, on Brushhill Road. They could make it look prettier and make it part of the neighborhood. And so I do think that there's room for comments. For each particular site, and Amor Road could actually be a really fun project, cause Amor Road is sort of a lot of mid-century built houses. And I think maybe Amor Road, you know, the design could be a little bit reflective of that and can kind of be a fun design. And they're all about putting bikes in, but there's nowhere for anybody to ride a bike. Like maybe they need to do a bike path around the development, you know. Brushhill Road doesn't have any sidewalks, so where are these kids gonna be riding their bike? You know, on the hill, you know, with all the trucks and cars coming. And I think the landscaping should focus on the perimeter of the sites. Because I think we need to design the landscapes for the neighbors. I think the, the, the contractors and the developers will always make the interior of their property nice. Cause that, you know, just goes to the marketability of their sites. But I think we really need to pay attention to the, what the neighbors are going to see and minimize the impacts. And that's what I kept hearing Tim say, oh, we can't decrease density, but what can we do to minimize the impacts to the neighborhood? And that's with design and landscaping. And even on like the bus pad, let's not just have a concrete bus pad on Brushhill Road. Wouldn't that be like cobblestones or granite or something attractive? And then even like on Randolph Ave. He's proposing 95 green giant arborvitae, I mean, 95 emerald green arborvitae. Like a straight line of five to six foot emerald green arborvitae. That's gonna do nothing for John Driscoll and his family. And it's a straight road, it's only like five feet of a planting bed. When they really need to maybe do like green giant arborvitae. But that will require maybe a 20-foot planting bed. And so I don't know, they're all, to your point, I'm kind of disappointed, and this is just my first go-around with it all. And I don't know really what to do, but I feel like we have to do more because we have to, we have to do something for these neighbors.
And Rich, you had your hand up to, to comment?
I think Sean was before me at these.
I'm sorry, Sean.
All right, so I, I guess my question is, so I, I don't, Maggie, I don't know that you'll find anybody, I'll speak to myself. You won't find me disagreeing with anything you're saying. I mean, this road and 40Bs have been awful. I, my thing though is like, we went through a lot of rounds of comments. And I remember the select board did comments, and we did comments, and you know, Tim did comments, and Tim could go into these things, and we've been hearing feedback. My question though is. Are we at this, are, are we at a stage where we think that they're going to be open to our comments? And we're thinking of giving them, cause some of the comments you're making Maggie are very designed, very in the weeds, which I think are good. I didn't mean a pun there, in the weeds. But I, I think, I think they're great, but are they going, are, like, are we at a place where they're gonna listen to us? Because they didn't listen to us on any of their other comments. And I guess that's, I guess that's my question, is Tim saying, hey, we have another round of comments coming? And this, there's an opportunity to do this type of comments at this point, because that's where they're at? Or are we just saying, hey, let's, let's throw more things out? I don't mean it negatively, I mean it positively.
No, well, I think the ZBA is still compiling, you know, until they write their final letter. I think they're, they're reviewing things, how much are they gonna be able to change it, you know, and, and what conditions will really hold up? Because I think a lot of, a lot of what, what we're saying is that we're not seeing the elevations, the architectural elevations. That they should be showing at this point, I think that should be a requirement. The proper, you know, landscape, full landscape plans, we should be able to see. But I will say, Josh, if you could add a comment on Amor Road, I did watch that. And I think sometimes watching some of the meetings is a little bit helpful, cause you see a little bit more of some, some of the design plans. At their presentations, is on Amor Road, they, the architecture was very inconsistent with the townhomes and with the back, the back property. They did make it more cohesive, where the architecture is actually more consistent throughout that property, which is a, which is a good thing. I know Cheryl mentioned how much pervious surface, you know, that project has. The good thing I did pick up on was the patios in the back, those are impervious, oh, excuse me, how much impervious surface? The pavers on the patios are pervious. So they are, I don't know what the design is, but I think we would want to see more specific details on that. On Amor Road, Josh, if you're writing this down too, maybe send comments. But also Cheryl had mentioned this, but that we would like to see with the retaining walls, what are the materials of the retaining walls? What are the, you know, the exact size of those, but a little bit more specific. And there's a very large electrical box that is right on the stair, the staircase where you come off of Brushhill Road to the property. And they're, they moved it away because they're trying to protect a tree. But I think there's a way to not have it right on, right next to your entry staircase, that, that that could be moved over slightly. And the, the last thing that I also mentioned is that that project, if you look at it, is all different colors. It's, it's moss green and it's lavender and it's, you know, this and that. And so they've tried to break up the massing by making it colorful. But I think what that does is it detracts from the overall aesthetic and it really doesn't fit into anything, you know, that you would typically see in Milton. What I would prefer seeing on that project is maybe a, and I think it's fine to have multi, you have different. Variations of maybe some earth tones, but that it's, that it has a cohesive look to it, that it's more classic. And honestly, just less trendy looking to have, you know, mob green. And, and that's sort of in right now is to do color on buildings. But, but I think having each townhome be a different color, it just, it, it would be much. And that's an easy thing for the developer to change, is, is make it a sort of a variations on an, on more of an earth tones. Or something that would not jump out at you, but would actually just blend in with the neighborhood is.
Meredith, I think, I'm not, did you, were you looking at the August 3rd drawings?
I, I was looking at the presentation that was made that they were showing, and I think. Oh, did they change the colors?
Can I do a quick screen share?
Yes, please.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the townhouse. This is the facing the neighbors, so these are the colors now. Meredith, but I did wanna point something out while I was looking here, you mentioned the terrace is in the back. You see this is the, this is a shadow. So they're like in, they're, because of the topography dropping off and the floor level being up here. They're showing it as if it's, these are kind of like cantilevered out. And, you know, this would be a place that leaves and other junk collect underneath these. And then these are being called out as the ground mounted mechanical equipment. So if that's the condenser, you're gonna have all of those condensers running next to your neighbors. So if we go back to the site plan, which I'll do in just a minute, this would be something I would comment on for us. Is that maybe the, there should be some kind of sound attenuating fencing. Maggie, that probably sounds familiar to you.
Yeah, it does.
Or, you know, some pretty dense planting dirt to help with sound from the condensers. And then I wanna go to the units facing the street to one of Maggie's points. This is called out as parched concrete on the steps. And, and this looks like a cable rail or something like that. And then you see block retaining wall here, so that's a concrete block retaining wall. And then this is showing like a wood fence there. So they've got something here, which might be cable rail and steel post and wood there, parched concrete here and concrete block there. That's not very, well, it's not necessarily all that attractive and it's not that cohesive. So if we go to the site plan. What we're looking at is, I guess, this, this, everything that's going to face Brushhill Road is, this is a retaining wall. That's concrete block. And, but, you know, it was up pretty high too. Let me go back to that one. You can see part of it here.
Yeah.
And part of it here, so it's pretty big and, and pretty present. And then, you know, these are those stairs that are very close to the sidewalk, it's that parched concrete. So. Like here, I would ask them to move this condenser. To a little bit further away, even though I would put it closer to the street, there's lots of landscape here. And if they can move that one a little bit further away, that you're not having quite as many condensers facing towards the neighbor. And maybe the same thing can happen with these. And then we don't have any like information about this retaining wall here, really. Probably on the civil drawings, but. Is there gonna be an impact in building that, that retaining wall so close to the property line on the trees that are on the neighbor's property here? You know, so that would be another comment I would have. So. anyway, I can stop screen share if you like, or I can go somewhere else if you'd like. This is just the architectural set from from August, I'm going to get to the date here, August 3rd, I believe.
And you saw that, I don't know if people saw that electrical, big electrical box, too, that's...
Right here?
Yes. So they, they were trying to protect that, I think it's an oak tree on the far left, but, but maybe they could move it over somewhere that it's just not right there.
Yeah. I've been hearing that the utility companies are being pretty restrictive and where you have to have access from a public way to get to it, and can't have landscaping in front of it. And I guess Brushhill Road might be better than having it on, on Amor Road, facing this neighbor.
I would imagine it may be limited what you can do there.
Yeah.
Cheryl, I got a question that may be for you or anybody. So just for, like, process here, because all these things that you all are saying, and I have some thoughts, too, are great. But if we, you know, so we could decide, let's put something together, let's send it over, and talk more depth, and get, or maybe this is all you want to do, and then we send it over. But then, what, what, like, is now the time, or does it have to be in two weeks? Like, what's the process, what's the timeline? And more importantly, is there an opportunity for Tim to go to the ZBA and tell them, we actually have some design comments? And this isn't like, hey, we don't want you to have 50 units or 1,000 units, or, you know, we don't want them set up this way. You're talking about in-the-weeds design comments that we haven't given yet. And typically, I don't think we have in some of our comments to the ZBA, because normally, I think what we were talking about before was more substantial things, like, you know? This is a problem on this site because of all these reasons. And now what we're saying is, okay, this is happening, and we've got some serious concerns that we would do with any project. You know what I mean? That they should want to listen to. And maybe the question is, can Tim go to the ZBA and say, hey, we would like to put some comments together that we think are up, that they need to see?
Well, if they're going to close a public hearing this week, is that what you were told, Meredith?
Yeah, on Amor Road, it's this week, and I think Brushhill is the following week.
So when would it be this week? Because today's Thursday, so did they already close it?
I'm sorry, maybe next week, I'm sorry, for Amor Road, and it would be the following week.
But don't they usually like to hear about these types of comments from us? I mean, again, didn't we normally, like, when we're talking about 40Bs, we were spending a lot of time on why this isn't a good project? What we're talking about here is very much what we normally do day-to-day in any project. So you would think that they'd want to hear these types of comments from us.
Yeah.
Well, I guess...
I kind of feel like they, they don't, they don't have final plans. And so that's, I think, someone said that. So it's hard for us to comment, because then, are they really going to be final or not? You know, and, and, you know, on that, on the back property line on Amor Road, I watched that presentation, and the landscape designer, yeah, she was quoting like Bottle Brush Buckeye, which I love Bottle Brush Buckeye, native, great for the shade. And she was selling Bottle Brush Buckeye, just like I would be selling it, I love it. And she showed a big picture of it, that's like 25 feet tall. But that's going to take 50 years to get that tall. Like, I just am, like, more concerned now for the today, for these neighbors. And, you know, and we don't really care that Amor Road has a hammock place. She was all excited about hanging a hammock somewhere. And I said, what is that going to do for the neighbors? You know, like, what's, like, I don't know, I feel like they need more trees, they need better design, and I don't, I don't know.
I don't know, this, this one, to me, in terms of all the ones we've had, just from a design point of view, is, at least it's two stories, you know? It's not like residential looking, it's like modulated. I mean, some of this other stuff, the same architect and developer have proposed, and other developers in town have proposed, you know, I, I think is less successful. I think Brushhill Road is less successful, because like, if you look at this pitch, you know? I mean, these are like, all right, so these don't have all the detail you might be looking for, and we might either be able to say, well, this is going to be void of detail, or they, they might say, well, this isn't fully detailed yet on the drawings, right? So we don't really know what we're getting. But we could ask in the, that they've put a condition in, you know, about some of the detail, I suppose. Whether that holds up or not is a question. But if I'm going to, if I were to comment on this one, I mean, I do think they've made improvements to this one. I don't like the, the way they're dealing with this balcony terrace thing in the back, and putting all the mechanical units there, condensers there. I don't like the concrete block wall, the things I told you about. So, you know, this one seems, you know, maybe they would make these changes, they're minor changes, you know, in terms of the cost, the architecture, but they would have impact, you know, I think, pretty significant impact. And then to the landscaping, Maggie, you know, in terms of like, what all these things actually represent, you know, I haven't looked at that carefully, but they do at least have room for landscaping here, you know? On some of it, they don't even have room for landscaping, so, anyway.
But for process, like, right, so if this was a regular project, we wouldn't be worried here, because it's coming to us, and we would, we would be talking about this stuff at length. The fact that it's a 40B, is it, are we trying to get comments in really quick, because this is never coming to us?
It won't comment to us.
So, so I, so I think that's a good point to make, right? So I don't think it's a bad thing for us to be saying to the ZBA, we have some, some comments. We have, we have comments on the site plan. You know, again, it's not like we're saying, hey, go do this project, we've already done that. You know what I mean? We've had our say, and they're doing the project. Now it's, well, can't we at the last minute make sure that it conforms with our town? And what we normally do on every single project, you know what I mean? Make these comments for safety, for aesthetics, for the neighbors. I don't know, I just, I feel like I want, I'd like to, for us to, instead of just make a list of this stuff and send it over, for Tim to actually say to the ZBA, planning board would like to make some comments. And, you know, like, make some room for that, right? Like, if it takes a week longer, it takes a week longer, like, they shouldn't want to hear us.
They're, they're under obligations to work at a certain timeframe, and the developer has to grant them the extensions. That's the 40B world.
No, understood, but if, I don't know, all right, I mean, I made my...
Rich, I think, and I'm not, like, you know, I'm looking at the tracking sheet for 936 Brushhill. And the last item entered onto the tracking sheet is planning board comments. So, and that follows the previous entry on the tracking sheet, is Chief Madden comments. And a couple prior to that, there's town engineer comments, there's another Chief Madden comment. So I, I believe that this is tracking the submission of comments that Tim and Josh collected. So click on that last, yeah, and, and I think this is true on the others, too. So there you see what I'm referring to, 725. So the comments are being collected, I believe, by Tim and Josh and being submitted. What they do with them, I don't know.
Well, that's, that, I guess that's, not, I mean, I'm probably a pipe dream here, I'm, I'm making it more like, hey, this is in our normal purview of a project. You should want us to take a pass at this and spend some time on it, even if it's a meeting, that we come back with comments and we pile through, and we think about, you know, normally we take, you know, forever doing a site plan approval, but I don't know, even if they allowed us to, you know, to spend some time on this in one meeting, I think it's, it's worthwhile for the town and for the project.
I think this, Meredith, but, you know, we should put this on our agenda for a discussion when Tim's back with us. Hopefully, he'll be back in the next meeting.
And I'll, I'll actually talk to him beforehand, just if there's anything that we need to do in the meantime, before September 8th, if there's any action items.
Yeah, and, and for the rest of, for the rest of our board members, I, I just want to note, it is 11 o'clock.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm ready.
So Sean and everyone else, just quickly, there's no such, there's no comparable comment left from planning board on Amor Road? And if that is closing next week, the comments that I made and Meredith made, if Josh could do a comparable kind of bullet point memo, I would like to get those comments on the record before they close the hearing next week.
We will, we will do that. Thank you, Cheryl.
Josh?
And just a question, like, are they supposed to provide, like, a public benefit? You know, are they to the town? Like, what's the public benefit that they're going to be providing?
Housing is what the state says.
Okay, this is a 40B project, this is a, yeah, it's fun.
So that's the only public benefit? There's not any more?
It's the greater good of allowing, you know, affordable housing in the town. I just think, yeah, I'd go out with...
And I, and I, and again, I, I think, for relatively speaking, these two projects are not high-density, and I think, I think they have a, a, a great opportunity to, to really fit in. And I, and I kind of think, you know, it's sort of something that we should be doing around town, taking pieces of, like, property, like, the developer only paid $470,000 for Amor Road. Now, now, I know we've now the funds, now maybe the town should have paid $470,000. We could have developed, and we could have gotten all 16 on our list, except for now we get four. So, you know, I just, to someone's point earlier, we need to, I think the town needs to be proactive and not just wait for individual developers to come in. But I do think we owe Brushhill Road in particular, I don't know, a little bit of courtesy, like, the design of the house should be a little more historic. You know, you guys did such a great job with, you know, Woodmere across the street, and like, the Burr Estate is a great example. So can't we make it look like a big old great estate house that's broken up into condos on the inside? And so it, like, fits in with that neighborhood.
I agree. Cannot agree more, that's, yeah, we should push for that, so. Okay, it is 11 o'clock, so I think with that, is there a motion? Unless there's anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
You just had one more item on the agenda, I don't know if you were going to...
Oh, you know what? It was, I don't think we need to even go, it was just, I left that on there because that, that was our appointments to the, to the different committees. And I don't think we need to take a formal vote on that, but I just, I was going to check, and I actually haven't talked to Tim if we had to. We sort of all agreed on different, you know, different committees, but I just, I wasn't sure if we needed to take a formal vote, and that's why I just kept it on the agenda, so. We did all...
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Rich?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, thank you all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Take care. Bye-bye.